This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403 B2D and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted, May 3, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 864-1675-9297 and password 022929, or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email City Department, City Council. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call. Counselor Termath.
Present.
Counselor Brink.
Present.
Counselor Martell.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Hurlahey.
Present.
And I'm Anne Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of the City of Sanford. We're joined this evening by Stephen Buck, City Manager, and Larissa Ricketts, City Manager's Executive Assistant. First item on the agenda are the minutes, 22-504-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on October 18, 2022. And I'll just, as a reminder, Counselor Stackpole wasn't present. I will ask for a motion to approve. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurlahey, was that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion to approve.
Second, Counselor Hanselman.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Martell.
Yes, I'd like to amend the minutes. It doesn't talk about at the end where we did not vote to adjourn, and there were counselor comments that were attempted to be made.
Well, we, I'm sorry, but we had adjourned already. We, I had declared us adjourned.
Right, but we need to vote to adjourn.
We actually, well, unless there was-
Oh, I'm sorry, this was on the meeting.
No, all right, well, I can, you can, we can-
Already they're off.
Who's that?
Let's see. If this is the executive session, I'm sorry. I was looking at the other one.
Yeah, these are the executive session minutes that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
So there is no amendment, correct?
I'm sorry?
There's no amendment.
No amendment, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That and one abstention. So six in favor with one abstention. 22-503-01, ordered to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on October 18, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can you, Deputy Mayor Hurlahey?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Counselor Brink.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion by the council. Counselor Martell.
Thank you. Same comments for, for this, thank you.
Well, I will just say to you that when I declare us adjourned, there was no objection at that point. You would need to object, so then we would have been able to vote to adjourn. That didn't mean we wouldn't have adjourned. And if you'd like me to do that going forward, I would be perfectly willing to ask for a motion to, to adjourn and a second.
I believe there was an objection by Counselor Termath at the time.
I didn't hear that. I mean, but I don't, I'm just saying that I don't think there was until there was after. Is this about the minutes, Counselor Termath?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it is. So I'd just like to say real quick that I did have a comment for the Counselor comments section to make, however, because of the abruptness in the adjournment of the meeting, I believe that it wasn't followed by the Charter at that time.
I don't think, I think you're talking about the rules of procedure, not the Charter.
Madam Mayor.
I mean, I'm just, want to make clear-
The adjournment was a violation.
Well, I'm not, let's just take, all right, so you are, you have an amendment that you want to add on to the, and you want to say that we shouldn't have adjourned or that we adjourned improperly. Would you just be clear about what your amendment is?
Yes, I would like to add that Counselor comments were not taken and we did not vote to adjourn.
Okay, so let's vote on the amendment first to the, to the motion. Anybody, so that was your motion to, to amend it. And is there a second to amend it, such?
Second.
There's a second by Counselor, first, a motion by Counselor Martell and a second by Counselor Termath. All those in favor of that amendment, please raise their hands. Two, all those opposed, amendment fails. All, so the motion on the table is to approve the minutes as written. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands. All those opposed, motion is approved with five votes. Two in opposition, and just note that it's Counselor Termath and Counselor Martell. Thank you. Mayor's report, City Council Subcommittee reports, I have none this evening. We'll go right on to the City Manager's report.
The first item I have is the Airport Manager, Navia, has again filed, as last year's application was not awarded, an application under the FAA Form 5100-144, the bipartisan infrastructure law airport terminal for funding through the FAA. The application is for a multi-year phased development over four to five years of funding request whereby Phase 1 is to acquire 6.09 acres adjacent to the airport for development. Phase 2 would be the permitting, environmental, and design for Phase 3, which is the installation of a dedicated access roadway with utilities and construction of a facility with landside parking and airside apron with de-icing capabilities. So this is pertinent to the year-round operation of jet services there. There's a large number of corporate jets that come in. Some of those fail to come in during the winter months because we do not have de-icing capacity, nor do we have the hangar storage facilities to, for them to be hangered, for which they would eagerly pay. So this is about a $14 million project in its entirety, applying for this funding through the FAA over that period of time. Phase 1 is a, is a request for a budget of $900,000, 810 of which would be federal and $90,000 would be local match. So again, it's the same project that was applied for last year. We're rolling that application and reapplying.
Steve, could anybody that has their computers on make sure that the volume is off, up here anyway, because it's definitely giving us a problem? It would just be from up here, or would there be possible that somebody in the chambers, in the audiences? It doesn't-
It would have to be pretty loud if it was in the audience.
Right. I think it's up here. So you need to make sure that your iPads, your computers, the volume is off. Yes, Counselor Martell?
Is everyone on Zoom muted? It sounded like it might be coming from that.
Right, well, she can tell if it is.
Everyone else on Zoom is muted.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone else on Zoom is muted, and that sound was coming from the chambers on the Zoom, so.
And that includes the volume on your phone, which you shouldn't even be on, but it just is, it gives us that kind of sound in the background.
Okay, the next item is the Main Department of Transportation Sanford Raise Grant Public Hearing. The Main Department of Transportation, as required under the funding source, will hold both a workshop and a public hearing to review and take comments on the scope of work under the Raise Grant umbrella to start in Sanford in 2026. The workshop will be held November 17, here in the Council chambers. It will, it will go from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. That is a live workshop here. It will not be televised. Purpose of the workshop is for the public to view each segment of the streets that are impacted and slated for improvement under the Raise Grant with the Main Department of Transportation and other local officials. This will allow for one-on-one discussions in a relaxed environment and to educate butters and other residents on the scope of work and timing under the Raise Grant. They'll take a one-hour break and then they'll start a public hearing that same evening, November 17, from 6:00, 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM here in the Council chambers. That will be live. It will be Zoom as well. It'll be televised via cable, YouTube, and Town Hall streams. Purpose of the public hearing is to take comment on the, from the public and to enter into record any and all substantive comments on the Raise Grant's scope of works, and for those questions to be answered into the record. Further details about the post-hearing information, timing, and how best to track the project will be further described during the meeting. So they're breaking the, the large scope of works up into multiple projects. There'll be an independent webpage hosted by the Main Department of Transportation for each one of those segments that will allow you to track the progress on each of those segments most relevant to, to your concerns. So again, the Raise Grant encompasses a large portion of Sanford's downtown to be largely funded, $25 million from the federal government for a $34 million estimate for the project. The remaining funds will come from the Main Department of Transportation in the city. Included in the report a scope that is out there. It's been publicly advertised a number of times, and we will be part of the advertisement for both the workshop and the public hearing upcoming. ATV Rail Trail Report, just putting everybody on notice that at the November 15, 2022 Council Meeting, the Parks and Recreation Director, Brady Lloyd, will provide a Sanford Rail Trail summary of activity on the shared use segment of the rail trail as it relates to the multi-use between, between motorized and non-motorized activities and the resulting actions taken and the results observed from last spring to current. Purpose of the presentation will be to further ascertain the levels of mixed use going forward and to make any recommendations for changes in light of the report. The next item is the city's e-newsletter. Last Friday on October 28, Communications launched the city's first, their new e-newsletter. It's entitled "The Main Street Memo." The e-newsletter will be a bi-weekly release on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, so that she's doing that subsequent to the council meeting, so they can report out on the, the previous week. It is specifically an e-newsletter formatted for electronic distribution and is not intended to be printed, a newsprint information type of letter. People may sign up to receive the e-newsletter by email by visiting the city's new website at www.sanfordmain.org and subscribing in the lower right corner of the homepage. The e-newsletter will always have City Council highlights, a questions and comments section, upcoming events, employment opportunities, and a host of news updates and informational postings of happenings in Sanford. All past additions will be archived on the city's website and can be referenced and viewed The last item I have is property tax stabilization for seniors. The assessing department reports that the city has received now 815 applications for the newly implemented property tax stabilization for seniors to be implemented for 2023. So again, persons who meet the following criteria may apply for the single-year cap on any tax increase over the 2022 bill if meeting the following criteria. Must be at least 65 years of age, a permanent resident of Maine, have owned a Maine homestead for at least 10 years, and be eligible for a homestead exemption on the property they are placing in the program. Assessing Department requests that if mailing the application, it must be accompanied with a copy of your driver's license or birth certificate for age verification. And the reason I continue to emphasize this, they have about 30 of these applications that do not have the, the required level of verification, so they have to try to make contact and chase that information down. I don't have the other information open at this, this point in time. Let me grab that. I just wanted to give people in the public a quick update about the Sanford Springvale Grabbing it here just a moment. This is information that we just received today, or just late this afternoon. Okay, so I'll just, I'll communicate my understanding that, so Zendal Bouchard, who runs the Sanford Springvale News, she gave us, she gave us information today that she intends to change the print edition from a weekly publication to a monthly. And she's also changing the twice-per-week email electronic format to once-per-week. So people can subscribe to the email newsletter by going to the sanfordspringveilnews.com, all one word, sanfordspringveilnews.com/subscribe. It includes all of the stories that are posted on our website, which is usually more than, than makes into the paper due to the space limitations of the print publication. So I'm, I'm personally sorry to see this, this modification. It is such a tremendous resource for our community, the Sanford Springvale News, to have a local hometown paper reporting on, on our activities, extremely cost-effective for us as, as a regular user of advertisements and such under that. So we will greatly miss the, well, the reduced service is, is going to be heartfelt for us, but, but thank you, Zendal, for all of the work you do for our community, and we greatly appreciate your continued publication. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, and I agree with your assessment. We will miss that weekly print edition. I know when I was shopping and going out of Shaw's, I used to pick it up every Friday, and I know a lot of people like to get, still get their news imprinted on paper, paper form, but I appreciate that she's still going to be publishing on a weekly basis, at least online, so that's great. Communications and Presentations, 22-497-01, quarterly report and presentation from the Director of Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council.
Good evening, Mayor Mistracchio, members of the council. My name is Keith McBride. I'm the Director of Your Growth Council. As you know, we do this quarterly. I've provided a quick dashboard of some economic development metrics, and I, this is a work in progress and will continue to be updated and improved and revised, but what will also be revised and improved along with it is, I think, the strategic priorities that the Growth Council is trying to pursue in order to obtain the type of economic growth we want to see in Sanford, and fine-tuning these metrics to make sure that we're measuring how close we're getting to our goals. So there will be some changes to this, but I wanted to take a moment tonight and go through some of what's on, on this document and what our strategic priorities have been for the calendar year of 2022, to talk about what we've been doing and how are we doing? Because we're not guaranteed to win every time. We'd like to, but at least we can say what worked, what didn't, and how we can do better the next time. So this happens to come at a time when the Growth Council is talking about our strategic, strategic priorities, thinking about how we ought to adjust those looking forward for the next calendar year and beyond. So it's very timely to have this conversation as well with the community and to let them know where we've been and kind of where we see ourselves going. So our top strategic priorities have been, for this last year, to manage the flow of commercial deals, including businesses and market rate housing as well, which has been an important component of our strategy for growth, to ensure a great customer service during the project review and development process, to expand and customers and the use of the Sanford Net Fiber Network, and to lastly, raise profile and pride in our community, in our assets, and in our improvements that we have here in Sanford and Springvale. So this economic development dashboard goes through some metrics that I think at least can track where we are on those and how we're doing with it. So to start off with, and we have a project pipeline that shows we are managing the flow of those commercial deals. As things sort of drift into that six-month-plus category, we want to make sure we reach out, keep in touch with those folks. It may be that it's a particularly large-scale project, and it's taking a long time for them to do diligence, or it may be that they're not quite ready to pull the trigger or haven't found the right location, or are still needing some type of assistance that hopefully we can give and get them from considering an investment in Sanford to making that investment in Sanford. I also have a section there, and I'm jumping ahead a few pages, and I apologize for that, but we will get there that has to do with small business development. Looking at the distribution of our Small Business Guide, which is available online at our website, it provides a great step-by-step guide for projects in Sanford. Our Small Business Advocate, Mary Hastings, was critical in putting that very valuable resource together, and we see it as valuable to us to get it in the hands of the people who want that information, are interested in doing something in Sanford, because we think it's a great resource, which also plays into another aspect of one of our priorities, which is raising our profile and, and things that we're proud of. And I also put in there on that page, talking about some of the small businesses that already in 2022, we've helped in one way or another plant themselves here in Sanford and either expand or to establish themselves as a, a new Sanford business. So these are success stories that we're proud of, and I thought they deserved a place on this, on this document as well. Lastly, we are looking at the development process and our participation in it. We see the Growth Council, myself, and Mary as being critical resources for folks who are trying to get from an idea, a concept, to a finished product, cutting a ribbon, opening a business here in Sanford. And we're working very closely with our friends in the Codes Department in planning and a handful of other departments as well to take a look at that process and the role that we play in it, making sure that we're bringing as much value to it as we can. And I'm very grateful for the participation and assistance of Alex and Jamie in Codes and Beth in Planning and Matt Hill and others as well, who I've had just a whole bunch of conversations with in the last six months that I've been here. They've been very willing to cooperate and see the value in what we're trying to do. I have some metrics in here about housing. Development of new housing options for Sanford has been a big part of what we talked about in the last year, and we're trying to find the right way to measure what we're trying to accomplish, but I've settled on looking at housing units by age, which gets a little bit messy in 2020, and I think that's because those numbers are from the dicennial census, whereas the other ones are from a different data set. So when you look at those numbers, it doesn't really make sense why suddenly you'd have much less housing from 1949 or earlier, and then all of a sudden it just grows. That shouldn't happen. But in any event, that's a, it's a picture, one of my former teachers was fond of saying that all data is useful, some of it is correct. So this is something I see as being useful, but maybe not exactly the perfect image of, of the housing market in Sanford. We're also looking at the value. What's the median home value in Sanford? And moving the, you know, the metric on that will show whether or not housing value here is increasing or decreasing, and as we continue to build new housing, especially new market rate housing, we expect to see that number change and shift. And it will be instructive to us on, on how marketing, how the housing market is changing. Likewise, we see that a change in demographics, we have numbers in here on our total municipal valuation compared with some of our neighbors, and also our neighbors' median household income. We're looking to see Sanford grow in a way that is different and unique from them. We're trying to move the odometer in a way that's different from other comparable communities. So this is, just provides a comparable metric that we can look at and say, sure, we're growing, but is everyone else, or are we seeing something, something unique? Our small business development, I touched on this really quickly, and I'm trying to go through this document a little bit fast, but this is a critical component of our economic development strategy. Small locally-owned businesses that provide local services to the community, not only the jobs. I mean, I come from a family that was supported by a small business owner, my father, my whole life, so I know the value of those small businesses and what they can do. And I think it's a critical component to show that we can grow our own economy just as well as we can attract businesses here to provide additional jobs. So we're going to see the number of total businesses in Sanford grow, and we're going to do that mostly by increasing the number of, of small businesses and then also bringing in some of the larger ones that'll be a little bit more few and far between compared to how many small businesses we can bring in. And as you can see, the, our biggest business, business assistance projects in 2022, they're all small businesses. And we're going to see plenty of those and in between some of the larger ones as well. It's going to be a multifaceted strategy, but I think we'll have a lot more wins on the small business side. With apologies, I do have a gap below industrial development, and the truth is, we just haven't found the right metric yet to measure this. Thought about measuring total acreage of industrial production facilities in our industrial parks and elsewhere, but acreage doesn't seem like the right way to measure production. Total value of goods produced in Sanford, not sure we can get a really accurate measure of that unless all the businesses are willing to open up their books and share their financials, which is not likely. Total businesses, just counting them, just counting heads, doesn't really account for the fact that you have some that are very large, producing great amounts of products, employing a lot of people, and some smaller ones. So haven't quite found the right way to measure industrial development, but we have a very unique strategic advantage here in Sanford when it comes to industry. And I think we do have to measure how well we're taking advantage of that, of that strategic advantage that we have. So that is one revision I know will be coming to you in a, in a future report. Sanford Net Fiber, this is, these are flat numbers. However, we have grown. We've gone from 76 total customers at the beginning of the calendar year to 77. Hold your applause. And I think in the total, the orange number, the bandwidth, we've seen a little bit steeper growth. We are seeing growth in this, and I think that the new commercial development opportunities that are out there and are being considered, I think, will show that blue line to start to increase a little bit more sharply as we move forward through 2023. That's a projection, not a promise, but I feel pretty confident about it. And lastly, our communication and marketing efforts, I've, I've been hearing more and more, especially lately, how important it is for us to raise the profile of Sanford. There's a lot going on. We've heard a lot about, for example, our high school and the Sanford Regional Technical Center doing incredible things and being something that is so unique and special to Sanford that not any other community in Maine and probably far from Maine can offer something equivalent. We have to take advantage of that. We have to take advantage of what makes us unique and stronger compared to some of our competing communities and, and speak loudly about those victories. We intend to, instead of just saying that we should do that, we tend to set the example, and I think the Growth Council will start to become more of a cheerleader for what's going on in Sanford going forward, as well as being a driver of some of this change. We are going to be working closely with Jordan Wilson, our Communications Director for the city, who I've talked to about this and is absolutely excited about that. And I think I would encourage, you know, encourage the whole community to do that as well. There's a lot of great things happening in Sanford, and we, we have to be the number one loudest voices talking about them. So I, I think, without giving too much away, I think you can hear in my voice what some of the highest priority things going forward for 2023 are going to be, and what I want the Growth Council to, to set as their top priorities going forward. A lot of it is already what we're doing, it's more of the same, but I think we also need to be a little bit more proactive and a little bit less reactive to just the things that are ringing the phone, and, and we need to be a little bit more aggressive in going out and bringing the things to Sanford that we want. So that's a conversation that is happening internally with the Growth Council right now. It's very promising. My board is very supportive of that as an idea, and I think you'll expect to hear, or you should expect to hear more from me in 2023 about how we're moving forward with that. But I'm glad to answer any questions, and I'm, as always, I'm thrilled to have an opportunity to speak to the community about what the Growth Council's up to.
Thank you, Keith. Any counselors have any questions? Did you want to say something? Nope.
I think people should know that we had the opportunity to talk to Keith prior to this, so there's, you know, if anybody, public has any comments.
Right. I don't see any hands up, so, I don't see any hands up at home either. Nope. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
See you in three months.
See you in three months.
22-502-01, Presentation of the Sanford Police Department Online Reporting, Chief Anderson. No? Oh, you, oh, okay, sorry. I just see him in the back, and I just assume it's him, but.
Hello. Thank you for having me.
Officer, what, Officer Allen?
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant.
Yes, ma'am.
So see, that's why I just shouldn't, you guys just have to introduce yourselves.
It's totally okay. You can call me Chad.
That's okay. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you for having me. I'll, I'll give you a quick, so as many of you know, and hopefully most of the community knows at this point, the Police Department rolled out an online reporting system a few months back, several months back. We're trying to get more involvement and interaction with it. I think there's a lot of reports that the Police Department takes that would fit in the online reporting. So I have just a, a couple things here. It's more to keep me on track of what I want to tell you real quick here. Let me go back.
So during this part, are we going to be turning our computers on to have a show-and-tell, or are we- tell, or are you just going to show us and not want us to have our computers on? I'm just asking.
I will go through the PowerPoint real quick, and then I will actually do a demonstration online for you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. All right. So we work with LexisNexis to come up with this online reporting. They do a lot of this, this kind of stuff from other agencies. We've worked with them for crash reporting as well. The online reporting was created to, for a couple of different reasons. One is convenience for the citizens to make online reporting for minor crimes. It frees up officers. Oftentimes, a report, even a minor, minor one can take anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour and a half to take the information and then document the information. That's valuable time. They could be enforcing traffic or other crime intervention type of activity. So, and there's also a time and cost savings to the, to the city. So how do you know with online reporting? I think this is one of the big questions. So there's, there's kind of three things that you need to ask yourself. Is it not an emergency? Are there no known suspects? And did it place, take place in Sanford or Springville? If you can answer yes to those questions, then we're on our way. Just a little bit about the known suspects and what that might mean. Known suspect is not just a name. It might be, we have received from reports where there's no place in the online reporting to type a name other than the reporting party. So if you type it in your narrative, it usually means more work on the backend where we have to go back in and add it. And it's probably, if you have a known suspect, something that we can address right away. So it could be, it could be a name. It could be a really good description of somebody. If it's just a, you know, man in a sweatshirt, you know, that's okay. You can, that one can be in there, but if you have a name, a really good description, a license plate would include a known suspect because obviously we can get information from that. So here's some other things to consider. If your bad guy left some things behind that we might be able to collect, so tools, got some other things here listed, foot or shoe impressions, blood, you might have surveillance video, things like that, that we might be able to add, something that an officer might need to pick, pick up, anything that the suspect may have dropped, or anything else that can be collected by an officer. These factors over here are things that elevate the crime and the seriousness of it. So theft or fraud that's over $1,000, damage that's over $2,000. This increases, increases the severity of the crime from a misdemeanor to a felony most of the time, which is one that we would want an officer to come out and take directly. If for some reason it slips through and we get the information, it's, we can approve the report and then assign it to an officer. It just may not be, it may not get the immediate attention we want it to get.
Chad, can I just ask a question? So this page, these are the things that make you not want to report it online?
Correct. They're things, things to consider before you do an online report. That's correct. You may want to call the agency directly. So what kind of things can be reported? There's a handful of them. There's 10 items. Burglary of a motor vehicle, vandalism complaints, animal complaints, identity theft, illegal dumping, intel or information, lost property, passing a stopped school bus, phone harassment, scam complaints. Go back there, take a look, so you can look at that again. A lot of these things, people get scam complaints from unknown numbers, or maybe a number that they think we might be able to track, or things like that. Oftentimes, those numbers are, they go nowhere, there's no way to track them, they, they come from overseas, same thing with emails, things that we can't get information on. You know, the other types of things that we see are burglaries of a motor vehicle, something that occurred during the night, somebody got into your car. Excuse me. Vandalism. So a rock through a window, smashed mailbox, that type of stuff. Animal complaints, these are things like there's a dog barking in the neighborhood nonstop, maybe not know exactly where it's coming from, but wakes you up in the middle of the night all the time. The identity theft, you took a, you pulled your credit report and there's some fraudulent information on there. May not have a way to track it, but we, we want to document it for crime reporting and statistic information. So where can I make these reports? The first one I have up here is the new Sanford, City of Sanford website, which is what I'll use to show you for the demonstration. We have, a lot of, many of the officers have these business cards with this QR code. This QR code can be found at a number of places, at the PD, in, in the social media, in the media. These officers have cards that they can hand out. Maybe they come to the house and it qualifies, or maybe they take your report and hand you a card that says, maybe next time, you know, if, if this fits for you, by all means, we have, we have them. This actual, this actual QR code was when the, with the city's old, older website, so we've updated the QR code, so we're having new, new cards made. Other options are contacting dispatch to request a link be sent to your cell phone. So that is one, that is one option. We have with Alex Hammerly today, Lieutenant Gagnier, worked with him and actually had it put into our phone system, so you can actually call. If online reporting is what you want to do, there's a, there's a portion of the phone tree that will take you to a line. It's an automated system. You just have to put, punch in your cell phone number, and the system sends you a link that brings you directly to the online reporting. So, live demonstration. Now, I keep in mind, I use the backend most of the time, so I will work through this. All right. So here's the city's website. At some point, and I think at one point it was there, but these, these fast click options here would be a good place to have something like that. But it is relatively easy to find. If I go to Departments and down under Police, right here is create an online report.
It's also, it's one of those bubbles on your homepage for the Police Department. It's right on the bottom of, of that.
It is under that as well.
It is, yeah.
So if you read down through here, it has a lot of the information I talked about originally. Crimes in progress, you know, give it, give us a call. We rather, we rather, you know, I love taking the information, I review the reports. Sometimes I wish I could have been there to, you know, provide the assistance that we want to provide directly. So give it a read. Again, it talks about whether or not it's an emergency, if it occurred, it occurred in Sanford, and if there are known suspects. As I scroll down to the bottom, there is a select incident button. So when that, it opens up a completely separate pane, which I will open up. And then you have your list of different types of incidents as you scroll down. You'll see that there's a definition of what it is, and then an example that might help you decide whether or not what you're reporting fits in these categories.
So you're going to pick one?
I'm going to pick one.
How about if we pick illegal dumping?
Illegal dumping? Sure.
Because that seems to be a complaint I get a lot about.
Okay. So again, this, an example of a known suspect is illegal dumping where there's a letter, there's mail that has somebody's name on it. That we want to know about because that's something we could collect or track down. But maybe it's something different that does not have any identifying information. So, so we'll select illegal dumping, scroll down to the bottom, click continue. It asks you if you want to report this as an individual or a business. What is individual? And then I go through my biographical information. So who are we going to be today?
Put Anne Marie's name there.
We'll put, use the Police Department. And you'll see, if you read through these, these are defaults from LexisNexis. Some of them, they can be, if it has a red marker, it has to be added, but we do want a, an address, so 935 Main Street.
The only one that, the only ones you have to fill out are the ones that have asterisks, correct?
Correct. Anything with a red asterisk. So an email address is so that you can receive confirmation. These, the system does provide an IP address, so if we were receiving fraudulent reports, we would know it because it would continue to come from the same place. So it's, it's a mechanism that's in place to prevent that. So I'll use my personal email for work, work one. So these questions here, these are required for the reporting requirements. I'm going to make myself younger than I am. And I can continue to my, oh, oh, see, and so this brings me back up. I did put 935 Main Street, but I failed to put in the city and the zip code. See if we got it all this time. So I'm going to use the Police Department as my home address where it occurred, and then I can do when this occurred. So let's say this happened yesterday. I'm just getting to it now. And I discovered it at 5:00 in the afternoon. Say 5:00 in the afternoon, it wasn't there, but at 6:00 PM it was. So this gives us a timeframe of when maybe you last knew that the, the incident was normal, and then the timeframe in which you found it. So, I'm calling, what was I going to call the Police Department, my residence? Because I do pretty much live there. So if I have photographs of, of the damage, if I have photographs of the trash or something like that, I can upload that information here. So it has the baseline information, and then I can type my own narrative. And whatever information that would be relevant. When I'm satisfied with that, I just hit submit. I can take a look at what, again, what I, what I put in. I can print that information if I so choose, and that's it. And then you close the pane. And so tonight, when I go into work, I'll check the, the backend of it, I'll log in, and my report will be there. I also have an email now that says that I sent one. That's what it looks like.
That would seem fairly simple. I think the big issue is going to be trying to decide if you should call or submit it online, but I think you really detail that pretty well.
And you could certainly call and ask, too. The dispatcher's can help with that, or you can ask, speak to an officer briefly, and, and we've, we've taken calls where officers have said, hey, you know, this, we can do online reporting for this if you'd like to do that. Here's the link, or here's where you find the link as well.
Counselor, oh, I see Deputy Mayor Hurley has a hand up.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to use an example. I had a window smashed, one of the businesses in our building, and I called it in because it's just definitely, it's what I do, you know, you call it in, you know, you guys want the report. And the, one of the dis, I think it was one of the dispatchers or the police officer who came out who said, you know, you can do this on online reporting, and now that you've done it, I can see how much easier it would have been. I mean, I don't know who did it, it happened in the middle of the night, but I could have uploaded pictures, you know, everything that you would need to have the documentation for the incident that you would never discover who did it. But it's good for your data, and I think it's important that we report that. So I think it was a perfect example of something that you could report that way. I don't have video, you know, I didn't really have anything to provide except something bad happened, and it was destructive.
And it is important that people report those things. Oftentimes, people think, now, and they're not going to find anybody anyway, so they don't report them.
Yeah.
But the thing is, is that if there's, if that crime is trending, and not everybody's reporting it, then we don't, and only one person does, we think there's one smash window, when in fact there was four or five along the same street. And lo and behold, somebody had a door, you know, a Ring camera that actually captured it. You know what I mean? So those are, those are things. And the other thing, too, that we run into is oftentimes, you, something like this, you can report on your own time. We've had people call and say, hey, I'd like to report this, but I'm on my way to work. Can, can I call you when I get home? Or here's my phone number, can you call me when I get home? Well, this might be easier for you.
Other questions by councilors? Counselor Turmatt?
Yes, thank you, Lieutenant. And absolutely, the ease of the system that you demonstrated is, is perfect because of the fact that you can have those, those options. But one question that, that I have is, once a party submits the report, how long does it take for, for them to get contacted?
So they'll get a, they'll get an email immediately that says that it has been submitted. If there is no follow-up needed, you'll get a notification when the, when the report gets approved. Again, the system is new for us, and we're, we're working out the bugs on our end as well, as far as when we get on there and the frequency that we get on there and things like that to approve them. It is, we're trying to make it a regular thing. If not once a shift, then once a day, if not once a day, then once every two days, but we're trying to keep it pretty regular.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you, Lieutenant Allen. Two things. One, I did use the system myself inappropriately, and an officer quickly followed up and said, oh, sorry, you can't report this online. So that, you know, happens. In terms of the use of the online reporting in the last couple of months, because we saw midsummer, I think, some of the data, can you share it all if we've seen an increase in the use of the online reporting in the last couple of months, or?
It was trending up. We were seeing more. In October, we saw a little bit of a decrease. But we're hoping, we're hoping to get, you know, quite a few, if not all, that fit this category online.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Allen, appreciate that.
Welcome.
Can I ask him a quick question?
Oh, I thought we were.
So I've handwritten a witness statement before.
Yes.
Are you now going to allow people to type it? I mean, your typing skills, I don't know, but I could really, I could really type up a witness statement so much faster than handwriting. Just a something, something to think about, some facility to allow for that.
Keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation, and this is for items that are not on the agenda. So I'm assuming that people who signed up here are for items that are not on the agenda. Joe and Sue Pierce?
Fractured on the agenda.
Oh, okay, then. Then I will cross your name off. That's perfect. Fred Smith. And Fred, he, he knows the, the drill, so. Welcome, Fred.
Thank you. I'm Nate Fred Smith. I'm a resident of Shapley, Maine. I no longer own any property in town, but currently trying to open up a new used furniture store in the Springvale Commons, or whatever you want to call it. Ran into a couple of problems. One, the previous owner, not the owner that owns it now, tried to illegally separate it from a three to a four unit. So when I- So, when I approached Jamie on it, and I said, Jamie, I don't know the layout...
How about if we just use our codes office?
All right.
I prefer that you not use personnel, people's names. Thank you.
When I contacted the code office, I said, I don't know the layout of this building before the guy illegally tried to separate it. The building had changed ownerships, and now a young Somali owns it that does not have good English speaking at all. So, I'm trying to work through that. And so, over a couple of weeks ago, I submitted a billing permit to remove the doors and cut an opening in the wall so that it could be back into a three unit. And it was been going on the third week now, and I got a call today that they need more information. And I don't have a problem giving them more information, but I have a problem, this is a business that an older lady is going to run. She's given her notice at her job, the store is ready to open, but we waited three weeks just to get a call today that we need more information. That bothers me, you know? Because when I sat down with code enforcement, they showed me the layout of the walls and where to draw and all this. And then today, I get information, we need to know what the walls are made of. None of these are structural. It's the delay. This lady gave her notice at her job. She's no longer employed, the store is ready to open, and I think a five or 10-minute walk-through could have solved everything, but we, it's been going on three weeks now. And that bothers me.
Thank you, Fred. Public hearings, there are none. Consent agenda, there is nothing on the consent agenda. There is no old business, we will go right to new business. 22-499-01, ordered to affirm a fixed-price fuel oil contract with Dead River Company for 25,000 gallons of number-two heating oil at the fixed price of $3.84 a gallon. Steve, are you going to?
Director Hammerly is on with us for Zoom this evening. He was working to negotiate the contract. I'll let him describe the contract, please.
So, the contract that we entered into is a fixed-price contract for this current heating season only. It is for the city facilities and our partner facilities, which include the Sanford-Springvale Historical Society and a couple of other partners with us. It's, the fuel contract includes the Memorial Gym this year because we hadn't included it in years past, but now that we have the gym, it's been included. And we, in conversations between Steve and myself and Ronnie Chaplin, the finance director, we discussed over and over the price offering that we were afforded and decided that this was the time for us to enter into a fixed-price contract.
Thank you, Alex. Before the counsel discusses, do I have a motion to approve? Counsel Hanselman?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second? Counsel Martell?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion by the counsel or questions? I don't see any, so...
Might be as good as we get, we shall see.
I think it's a pretty good price for right now.
Somewhere in the middle of what we've been seeing.
Anyway, so, all those in favor, by a show of hands? That is unanimous. 22-516-01, ordered to change the City of Sanford's plan for its dispatchers for future services only, effective January 1st, 2023, as set forth. Steve, do you want to present this?
I will. So, in your packet is a, an order changing the Sanford, Sanford's main purge program as it relates to the single unit of the dispatch center. So, the dispatch center, the individuals employed there came under the public safety definition about two years ago. During the negotiation of the last employment agreement, one of the elements that was negotiated was to include them into the special plan 3C, the 3C special plan, no different than firefighters and police officers that previously were qualified under that. Somebody's got their Zoom on. They were previously qualified under that as, 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 as public safety employees. It provides for a 25-year no-age retirement. It's a very good benefit, it's at 67.7%. So, it's very beneficial for the dispatchers that was negotiated in. So, as part of that requirement, main purge requires that you amend your service program plan. So, in the order that's in your packet, the first element is the only element of change, and it states, under subsection A, provide special plan 3C to the dispatchers who work more than 20 hours per week and are not seasonal or temporary, as defined by the appendix to main purge rule, chapter 802, for service rendered after December 31st, 2022. So, it starts January 1st of this coming year. Service rendered by dispatchers from July 1st, 2002 through December 31st, 2022 remains under the regular plan AC, and the service rendered before July 1st, 2002 remains under regular plan AN. So, what that encompasses is, for those individuals that are servicing, serving prior to this change, they remain under their old plans as the tertiary will calculate at the end of their employment. So, there's no buyback provision on this, so the city's not buying back any time. It is a current service change only, so moving forward, as of January 1st, 2020, 2023, they will have the, they, all, all members of that unit must change to the special plan 3C. So, what that means, if you have, for an example, an employee that's been there a large number of years under the AC plan, and they have just a few years into 3C plan, the tertiary calculation at the end of employment, they, they will calculate that under that blend, as well as under the years of service under the AC plan, and they will receive the higher benefit of the two as calculated at that point in time. So, there's, there's no detrimental loss to those that were under, longer-term under the AC plan. Since this was negotiated in the contract, we have gained and experienced dispatcher just because of this plan change, and that was part of the incentive package as far as negotiating that, as maintaining as favorable and as competitive employment contract as possible, because other dispatch centers were, are moving to this plan, we were able to make the switch far quicker than, than others. So, all other segments B through G in this, this document simply already goes back and caught up by what's pre-existing, there's no changes other than subsection A. Thank you.
So, I need a motion to approve. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Counsel Brink?
Second.
Any discussion by the counsel? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? That is a unanimous vote. 22-469-01, ordered to select a parade route for the holidays parade, or alternatively, have an improved tree lighting ceremony. I'm going to let, is Brady going to present this?
Yes, please.
Oh, there you are, I see you already. I'm going to let Brady present this, and then I'll probably just ask for a motion to discuss unless somebody has already got it in their mind that they have a solution, what, what they want to propose. Let's let him present what we've got as options. Thanks, Brady.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to start off by giving you a brief history of how this came about. I was emailing with the police chief of, since our hours changed, I was curious if he thought it would be an issue if we moved the parade from a Friday evening to a Thursday evening, since we would have our staff here. And that prompted a, he, he didn't have an issue with that, but some inherently dangerous risks come with a parade at night. So, after talking through that, we went to municipal operations and property subcommittee, and we presented to them, and then they suggested that the Friends of Downtown weigh in on this. And what we gained from the Friends of Downtown meeting was, that group would like to see a Friday, December 2nd parade, starting at 5:30. It would wrap up around 6:00 PM, and the tree lighting would happen around 6:15. And I would briefly like to just talk about that route because it is changing from what we used to do. So, it would be lining up on Emory Street, closing it off at Main Street, lining up down Emory Street, and then if we had overflow traffic, it would turn left onto School Street, and then the parade, once it starts, would just turn right onto Main Street, head down towards Central Park, go through the intersection, and then end at St. Ignatius Street after the Midtown Mall, and then the people could disperse from that lot there. What is new in this route is that we would, our Parks guys would trail the parade just like they do in the Fourth of July parade. And I have a map here, Steve, called the Friends of Downtown 1, if you would like to pull that up. It shows three blue dots around Central Park, and we would continue the closure of the streets until the people from the tree lighting disperse after the tree lighting. So, all these red dots that you can see here are where the roads would be blocked off for the parade, where we would have barricades. But the blue dots, we would continue after the parade goes through and by Central Park. We would then continue to block off Robert Street, Washington, and Main, and then School Street as well, so that the people can safely either get to Central Park or disperse from Central Park after the lighting. So, that is what the Friends of Downtown proposed. There are still quite a few barricades that will need to go up, but it shortens the length of the parade, and it also shortens the amount of intersections that we need to go through.
Before we start discussing, I just, I think I'll just ask for a motion to discuss. Counsel Stackpole?
Move, we discuss.
Is there a second? Counsel Hanselman?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to discuss, discussion. Anybody want, Counsel Hanselman, I know you were involved with the Friends of the Downtown, so I'd like to hear the...
Yeah, just to kick off the conversation, there was a lot of discussion at the Friends of Downtown meeting, as well as with citizens in our community, and although we really respect and appreciate the input from our chief on some of his concerns about the potential hazards of a parade at night in particular, the concept or the idea of, one, moving it to a Thursday evening wasn't appealing due to people's work schedules and school being the next day. We did discuss at length daytime versus nighttime, and there's a lot of sentiment and excitement around Christmas lights, which of course, aren't effective during the day, so that didn't seem like a good alternative at this point. And then there was also a lot of discussion around, can we give this a shot with really clear parameters to attendees to stay out of the streets and for float participants to both make sure they're not throwing candy and also, as part of the float signup, be required to have mandatory walkers, which I think was also discussed at subcommittee level, with those mandatory walkers ensuring or helping keep people out of the streets and away from moving vehicles. So, there was a lot of discussion put into it. This felt like a really good compromise, and I just think that it's important, however this moves forward, if there is a parade, that the community really understands that this event is at risk if we're not being careful, both attendees and people participating in the, in the parade as floats, again, if it moves forward, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hanselman. Counselor Termath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I took a look at this proposal, and, and of course, you know, I'm always a traditionalist, but I do acknowledge safety, okay? And, and of course, having, you know, having attendees, you know, be mindful of, of traffic and being mindful of their surroundings, that's, that's imperative. But, you know, I just want to say that, you know, I'd rather, you know, keep this parade in its traditional setting, in its traditional form, due to the fact that it does bring people together, it brings the community together. I just, I looked at the proposal for the School Street, you know, alternative, and having that right in there in that hard residential area, that was really, you know, really a tough sell for me, because of the fact that it's so close to all the houses. Main Street gives us a wider berth and know that, you know, there's a lot of security that goes involved in a parade, a lot of street closures, things like that, a lot of manpower. But I think, you know, it gets the businesses involved, you know, with, with the current form and the, and the current parade that we have. It goes right through our downtown, we have the lights, everything culminates at Central Park at the evening, and, and that just, you know, that just signifies the, the season, right? The reason for the season. So, you know, I, I do like this Friends of Downtown proposal, but I'd like to hear a little bit more discussion on, on this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Okay, so this parade started back when it was downtown legacy, and so I've been intimately involved with it. So, all we're, all that this proposal does, the lineup for this particular parade occurred around McDonald's, Dairy Queen, and that general area, which is, it was actually quite horrific because there was a lot of people trying to get to McDonald's and Dairy Queen on a Friday night. So, it, there were, this, the shortening of the parade is minimal, it is just a few streets. So, it's actually better to be in residential neighborhoods. When we do the Fourth of July parade, that's in residential neighborhoods, it's a lot less troublesome. It really is horrible around McDonald's and Dairy Queens. So, that's, that's one of the reasons to move it further down the streets. It is not shortening it that much, which I know is a concern, so it's really not shortening it that much. I think you're, I mean, Cumberland Farms alone and the fire station are going to be enough to deal with. I don't think you're really harming businesses. One of the reasons I love this parade is that, as a downtown organization, it was one of the best parades we did for, one of the best things we did for businesses, because people want to go out to eat afterwards. There are people who are, I mean, Gina up at the town club when she had it up on the top, she, whoever got that night for their Christmas party scored because they would watch the parade, watch the tree lighting from that beautiful vista. So, it's really a good parade for businesses, and it's a good activity for businesses in our community. I think this change is manageable. I love, Anne and I have talked about the candy option and the walkers, mandatory walkers. We've also talked about, maybe we do, you know, get volunteer candy givers, and everybody provides a little bit to a bag, and then, you know, you have four to six people take a block, and you each do a section, and that's how you hand out candy that night and ask everybody not to throw anything from the vehicle. So, we've talked about a few ideas to make that safe. And then I think it's just about, you know, manpower and volunteers to make sure all exits onto the street are well-blocked, so that nobody can get through. So, I think this is, I think this is a good plan, I think we can make this work, and I don't think, I don't think we're really ruining it by this slight shortening of it. I think it might actually be helpful, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Because I have a couple for Brady. So, I just want to clarify that everybody that's participating in this parade will have to participate in a kind of a sit-down health and safety quali, you know, like this is how it's going to be, no throwing candy. You know, it's at night, so here's why we, we have, have to have you, at least the representative of whoever's going to have a float. So, there will be no last minute showing up and getting angry because they can't have a float.
I, I wouldn't say a sit-down, but there will be, we'll, we'll cut the parade application deadline probably a week out, and then there will be an email sent to those who are registered of the exact rules, and, and also, I will update the application tomorrow to reflect the, the walkers that would be associated with each group that signs up as a mandatory help keep the kids out of the street and handing out of the candy.
Great, glad to hear it. Is there any other deliberation by the counsel, Counselor Termath?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Brady, just a quick question, or maybe I missed this, but to clarify, are we still going to have Santa Claus for the kids at Central Park, or did you guys?
No, he's not coming. Sorry, just joking. Sorry, I couldn't resist. He decided he does not like the parade.
Thanks for canceling Christmas, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Brady.
To be honest, to be honest, our original Santa is booked on Friday, the 2nd, so we will be looking for an alternative Santa.
Wrong answer.
And while I say that, we're still looking for a Christmas tree for Central Park, so if anybody is willing to help donate one, we're still on the search, and we would like to generate a list going forward so that we can have a couple of trees in preparation for years to come.
I tried to give you my tree on Twombly, nobody wants to take it down.
So, we're still looking for a tree, and of course, we know Santa will be there. Right?
Yes.
Thank you, Brady.
Santa has already confirmed from the North Pole, Brady, that he is going to be there.
Maybe, yes, we, we know Santa will definitely be there, so...
Brady, I, I think this tree is very difficult to get out, but I have one on Twombly Road, right near the intersection with... right near the intersection with Shaw Street.
It's a good tree.
If you guys can figure out how to get it out of there.
Is there anybody from the audience that wishes to speak or say anything? No, everybody's okay? All right, great. So I would like, oh, Steve, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to confirm, maybe the police chief can nod his head, because I know Brady has not been here in years prior. Have we previously turned them and discharged them down St. Ignatius Street, the floats?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I just, I was just concerned about the radius, the tight turn there. I know they've got the entire width of the street to work.
The first, the first year you either turn, you were given a sign, you either went into the Midtown Mall or you went down Saints.
Okay.
Yeah, that's how it'll be this year, too. If they have a large enough trailer or something hauling, then we will, we will direct them into the Midtown Mall, because that is a tight turn.
And everybody understands that this is a big effort on parts of Parks and Rec and the police and fire, because it takes a lot of coordination, because God forbid something else happens that people have to leave who are actually tasked with parade safety. So I just want everybody to be on the same page. I think it's, I think it'll work, I'm satisfied that this will work, and I'm just glad, and it will be on Friday night, not Thursday night, correct?
Correct.
And the only other thing is, for the first time, we will be blocking off that area until after the tree lighting around Central Park, which I think has always been a concern of mine, because there was a lot of running back and forth and a lot of traffic, so I think that it actually will be safer this year.
I just, could I say one more thing?
Sure.
I'd like to include Department of Public Works in that thanks to, to get it all ready, because they're going to have a dump truck or some sort of large vehicle at the intersection of Main Street and Winter Street and Lebanon Street, on the backside of the wooden barricade, so that there is added security of a vehicle not coming through that intersection.
That's good to know. Thank you, Brady, and thank you to Public Works for participating in this. Counselor Hanselman?
Just two last things. If we could get the Department of Public Works to decorate those trucks, it would be lovely, Brady.
I was just thinking, yes.
Matt will.
That's a mad old question.
All right, all right. The only other thing is that I would really appreciate if this moves forward, as it sounds like it might be, that we reach out to our recently renowned gold medal-winning marching band to ensure as quickly as possible that they'll be in this parade. I heard rumor that other communities have solicited their president, so I just want to make sure, Brady, that if this goes forward, we reach out to them ASAP.
I can do that tomorrow if it goes forward.
Great idea. Do I have a motion to approve the, let's call it, the Friends of Downtown? Counselor Brink?
So moved.
Second, Counselor Hanselman?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Holidays Parade for the Friday, First Friday in December.
December 2nd.
December 2nd, thank you.
You're welcome.
All those in favor, by a show of hands? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that wasn't hard. There we go, let's see. Twenty-two dash five-one-eight dash zero-one, order to take action to approve placement of a new sign at the Midtown Mall with a new name designated as Main Street Marketplace, and to affirm the arrangements for access to and maintenance of the sign. So this is, so that we're all, let me just, before we go, and I know you're going to explain this, are you the one that's going to do this, Steve?
I will, yes.
That we're just not allowing the placement of a new sign, but we're actually agreeing to name the, not ever call that the Midtown Mall again, which would be absolutely wonderful. So go ahead, Steve.
Yes, so this came forward a little bit faster than we thought, but the concept for the sign and the placement for the sign and the design for the sign has gone before the Design Review Committee, and it comes with their recommendation to move it forward, as has been described in your packet. The design that was reviewed is a granite sign, the only lingering request they had was to make sure that the font that was used on that was in alignment with other fonts that have been used for granite signs here in our community, and we have, we have a number of those. And I would note also that the granite sign is proposed to be made here locally, right here in Sanford, so we like that aspect as well. So there'll be two placements of the signs, there's pictures in the packet. Wow, let me collapse some of this down, so I can show the public here. So there's placement off in Washington Street to the entrance there, as well as, if I can scroll down here, the newly formulated entrance on the Main Street side, where the new walkway has been constructed, there will be a sign there in the landscaped area. Each of those locations have been approved by the Design Review Committee and the design itself. Again, they're looking, they're seeking for city council input as far as the name that's proposed, Main Street Marketplace, and there has been a legal agreement as far as easements concerned on the city's property, as far as the maintenance for conduits for lighting and things of that element, so, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve? Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'd like to make a motion that we rename the Midtown Mall the Main Street Marketplace.
And allow for the?
And allow for the signage on city property.
Counselor Stackpole?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just have one question that relates to the Raze Grant. Anything that we put will be able to be utilized going forward, or at least fit into what we're doing, because those are all, both areas that we're going to be doing some work on.
Yes, by my, by my understanding of the scope of the Raze Grant, those two particular areas will not be touched as part of that scope of work.
Excellent.
There'll be new sidewalks there, but there's no relocation of those sidewalks in those proximities.
And I just want to say thank you to Partners Bank, because they're the people that are providing the signs, and I think that it's always great, I mean, I think they have the right name, because they are very, very good partners in our downtown, so it is very appreciated, at least by me and I think by the entire council, that they're stepping up to do this, because I took a look at that horrible sign that's on Washington Street, and I can't believe, I mean, after a while, you just don't see it anymore, but it really is not a good sign. Anybody else? Counselor Hanselman?
Madam Mayor, I actually thought we could auction off the current Midtown Mall sign. I think it has some value in a local bar, somebody's, you know, she or man cave, I just throwing that out there. Maybe that's a Friends of Downtown fundraiser.
I'll leave that in, Steve and who, that is actually a good idea, somebody might like it.
If it was a lit neon sign, maybe, but, you know.
Hey, those, what are those guys that come around the whole country, you know?
Oh, the Pickers.
The Pickers, see, I knew you'd know that. The Pickers would probably love that sign. Counselor Termath, you want it, right?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it. I just, you know, somebody please tell me that there's going to be more than just a sign, because, you know, the Midtown Mall does need a facelift, it's been around since the 1970s, and with progress comes, you know, perfection.
You could ask the owners.
So, okay, so you know what, so how about we, you know, we get involved with that, because a sign and changing the name, I mean, this is, this is history to Sanford, this is history to everybody that grew up here, and to take away the Midtown Mall, you know, just because, you know, somebody wants to change the name, it's not going to change how it's currently is in its, in its current form. So, I mean, if we're going to change the name, then let's get involved with further discussion, and let's get in touch with the owners and have them, you know, remodel the whole center.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you, Counselor Termath. I just wanted to comment that we actually have been working with the owners in a CBD G grant that helped improve a portion of the Midtown Mall, or the newly, no longer will be the Midtown Mall, and efforts like those have been ongoing. We don't own those buildings, so we have limited ability to make changes, nor I think would taxpayers honestly want us to fund, you know, actually updating those buildings with their tax dollars, but we're working as a community to attract developers and investors and work with the areas to make those changes, and I would just say that one step in the right direction is one step in the right direction, and sometimes it takes one store opening, or one sign changing, or one us thinking about our area in the Midtown Mall in a more positive light, and that thinking can actually become a reality. So I'm going to, I'm going to go with that positive spin on it myself, thank you.
And I just want to say real quick, and thank you for your comments, Counselor Hanselman, I just want to say this real quick, that we do use taxpayer money to help facilitate the property at Midtown Mall to effect of like $75,000 a year. So there is, there is an investment by the community in that property, so, you know, the community, you know, of course, you know, let's do more.
Well, just to be clear, it's in the parking lot, but that's a whole other issue that we've been working on, and I could just say that Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley and I have been actually working with various owners in the Midtown Mall to upgrade and work on that since 2004, I would say, you know, it just, sometimes when somebody owns a building, you just can't make them do it, you don't want, they do what they want to do. It's their building, and that's America.
It's an investment, they need to make money.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of things. One, I'm really not a fan of the name change, it doesn't include the name Sanford at all. I think that maybe something like Sanford Marketplace might make sense. Where I really have an issue is these, the signs look like they're very small and won't be very visible from the road, so that's my biggest concern. They're going to, like, the ones nearer the bank will be hidden mostly by the bushes and those trees, so I don't, I don't think I can support this at this point. I don't know if there's been any sort of studies done as far as sign placement and visibility from the road and all that kind of thing, but I think this might need a little more work. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Counselor Hanselman?
Just one comment, Counselor Martell, I believe in the work paper, it indicated that the shrubs will be removed to increase visibility and replaced with some appropriate landscaping for legibility, or, excuse me, so, yeah, so if you could read it a little bit better, so the shrubs will be removed.
Right, there was a lot of backup in the, in Granicus Forest to look at, and just to be clear, it has passed through site plan review as well. So, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this change? That is one, two, three, four, five in favor, all those opposed? There are two opposed, that would be Counselor Termath and Counselor Martell opposed. Motion passes. And can you just make sure that Partners Bank gets a thank you from us in some way? Because I do really appreciate, they have been integral to a lot of the changes that we've made in that area, and I do appreciate it, over many years. Okay, on to the next longer part of our agenda. Twenty-two dash five-zero-five dash, oh, I got to go to my, sorry, I have a script. Twenty-two dash five-zero-five dash zero-one, this is a hearing to determine whether 11 Kimball Street identified as tax map K-29, Lot 20, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book 17684, Page 107, and mortgage recorded at Book 17684, Page 107, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. I will declare the hearing open, and I will turn it over to Ian Howseal, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to introduce, we've got four dangerous building hearings tonight. The first one is a multi-unit, and the next three are Main Street's properties. The land bank has been discussing these for quite some time, they're part of a greater strategy. The second three are more characteristic of each other, they're very much a batch. They include some properties additionally that we've been discussing, including the so-called Chainsaw Building and the former Republic Ash Building, but those two buildings, we're hoping for resolution outside this process, so we've given them a few more, a little bit more time, and also the capacity that it takes to move these buildings through a dangerous building hearing process. It is a lengthy process, so the first one will take a little bit longer, and we'll be able to speed up as we go along and you get the hang of it. These are hearings, and the purpose of the hearing is to determine whether the property, in this case, 11 Kimball Street, is a dangerous building or a nuisance, and the questions are whether it's unsafe, structurally unstable, unsanitary, a fire hazard, unsuitable to how it is used or occupied, improper to how it is being used or occupied, and then is it a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, or abandonment, and is it dangerous to life and property? This is a hearing, it's not a public hearing, so it's for parties in interest, so that might be a mortgagee in some cases, so they're entitled to speak, as well as the owner. And then I also wanted to point out that this is an opportunity for those parties to present evidence, so you'll be hearing from me as far as the city's evidence that will be presented, and they may present evidence as to why it's not dangerous, and they may oppose any corrective action. So the standard corrective action, it's been very standard for quite some time, is a rehabilitation plan. So we give you ample opportunity to propose a plan, carry out that plan, you must submit that plan to the city manager, you must demonstrate the ability and willingness to carry out that plan, and then finally complete that plan. So it's very much a consent order, it's a consent order with the city council, which you then delegate to the city manager for administration. If you don't carry out that plan, we may take steps, some of those steps is all the way up to demolition, removal of the building, in some cases, we actually may secure the building, and we will collect our expenses through special tax or court order. In this case, I wanted to start off, the owner of this property is Alton Rollinsford LLC, they've owned this property since 2018, according to the tax assessing records, they purchased it for $37,000. The current property is valued at $123,400. This is the lowest-valued multi-unit property in the city's multi-unit housing stock. This property is depreciated by the assessor at 90%. There's 10% left of value in this property, according to what has been assessed, according to assessing, according to an assessment of our property value. It's located on Kimball Street, it's a couple streets over from where we are tonight, it's in that general direction, it's a couple blocks over from Main Street. This is the deed that shows the transfer, it was a, from, there was a foreclosure involved, there was a trust involved that brought it into Alton Rollinsford's possession, and there is a mortgage on this property as well. The mortgage is for $273,000, that mortgage was originated in, excuse me, arrow up, in 2019. This is the notice of the hearing, it was properly served upon Alton Rollinsford at their address, as well as what we understood to be Ultima Bank and Trust Company. I did hear from Ultima Bank and Trust Company, which is now Cambridge Bank, so they're aware of the hearing, and these are the certified receipts of receiving notice. Additionally, we notified or noticed this hearing in the newspaper for three successive weeks. When we go into this, we're not quite sure whether, sometimes whether there are parties in interest, so we do know that now. Alton Rollinsford LLC is represented by an attorney, Gregory McCullough, from the Sanford Law Office, included some correspondences in the, in your packet. He reached out to me and expressed that he was asking for a rescheduling of this hearing. He's going to be available from, unavailable from the 27th to the 15th of November, he's sailing from Newport, Rhode Island, to St. Martin in the Caribbean, he won't have inter- He won't have internet access, so he can't do it by remotely, and so he's asking for a hearing rescheduling of after November fifteenth. I did respond to him and said that I would present this, to this request, to the city council, and it, it is for them to determine whether or not they continue this hearing at a later date. There is no option just for a, a, a rescheduling administratively. It's been advertised, it's been noticed, and the hearing is scheduled, so that is before you, and I expressed that to him, that I would bring it forward to the city council. On October twenty-sixth, actually, this would be last Thursday, he reached out to the, the city clerk separately, and, and asked that this hearing be rescheduled again, and attached my previous email to him. There were some changes in his notes, looked like his travel plans have been delayed, as I understand there's, there could have been hurricanes. And then I wanted to get into the city correspondences. This, this property has a history, at least in, in my tenure with Sanford, going back to two thousand eighteen, with, with, when Alton Rollinsford first purchased this property. This is a notice of violation ordered to comply from the Fire Marshal, and then also a rental inspection on May twenty-fifth in, in two thousand eighteen. I want to make clear at this time that we, the, the Code Enforcement Office and myself have always viewed a notice of violation as a notice. We're informing you that there are violations that exist, we must, by law, tell you that you must correct those violations, but we've always been very willing to work with you with timeframes to correct, and also make accommodations if there's hardships. The notice says this. It's said the same language now for five years. And this is the violation notice that, that we've used until the last one I'll present for you tonight, and to explain where this property has gone, or, or where this procedure has gone throughout this process. So this is the notice of violation from two thousand eighteen, along with the violations that are there. In two thousand twenty, July twentieth, there was a violation notice that was sent out for failure to comply with the prior notice. So two years had elapsed, and nothing had changed, okay? So again, we're just noticing and letting someone know that the violations need to be corrected. In two thousand twenty, there was a housing inspection done on Unit B. There were lax, lack of windows, issues related to the habitable spaces, and then, again, a, we, we returned in two thousand twenty-two. I'll tell you why we returned in two thousand twenty-two, because we began working with the assessing department, and specifically focusing on the six to ten unit buildings. And the reason we were focusing on the six to ten unit buildings, and this is a eight unit building, is that because they had the highest range, so they had the highest value, and also the lowest value. And of those properties that had the lowest value, they had the absolute lowest value. So specifically, and additionally, there were, there was a manageable number, so we were able to go back after our initial inspection and re-inspect and make sure these things were being brought to where they needed to be. So on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, another inspection was done of this property. And at that time, we suspended the rental license, there was a substantial amount of trash, there were issues related to the structural integrity of the stairs, the egresses in and out of the buildings. It was not in the Code Enforcement Officer's opinion that these accessways to the units were safe. I will, I'm gonna jump from here to the police reports. I received a call from the Public Works Director that there was an explosion in this building on, let's see, on, on seven nine. I'm also seeing that on the, 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 May twenty-fifth, there was another structure fire. There were, on seven, there, July tenth, there were medical calls, there were disturbances on, on July, on July tenth, mental health calls on July sixteenth, referral calls to DHHS on August thirteenth. But at this point, I'm gonna go back to where we stood on the notice of violation. We didn't receive a response yet again. So on August second, now, ten days later, the Code Enforcement Office ordered the property vacated. They provided a substantial amount of time, quite frankly, a gracious amount of time, given the conditions that they were observing, through September nineteenth, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two. So this was at the beginning of August, and gave to the end of September, to, to the middle of September, to correct the violations, or at least reach out. So this is that same order to vacate. We received a letter, or found a letter that the tenant provided us on October twelfth, that, that Alton Rollinsford was appealing the decision. So it had been appealed both in court and also to our Board of Appeals. This was the Board of Appeals document that was filed, and then the Board of Appeals, and then subsequently, another unit was vacated on September sixth. The Board of Appeals met on September twenty-first to discuss this, and then met again on Decem, October twelfth, to hear the appeal. Before the October twelfth meeting, the appellant submitted documents, there's a profit and loss statement expressing, I believe, that a hundred and ninety thousand dollars had been spent on this property. It showed some decking that had been repaired, some trash had been cleaned up, some boards to these stairs had been replaced. None of this was in communication with the Code Enforcement Office. There were no permits pulled, no discussions had. Railings, you know, this, this is not necessarily work that requires a permit, but the question whether or not wasn't whether it was a railing, it was the structural integrity of that, that walkway in its entirety. Again, boards replaced, additional boards replaced, this board replaced, this is one that you can see from the street to any passerby. You can see that until that time on ten five, that had been sitting there for two months for access, and I would argue, I would, I would have to go back and look at the art, the pictures for longer, but it could have been up to a year that a deck board to these units for the access to that unit was absent. So through that, through that process, it was argued that due process was not granted. The Board of Appeals reviews these, these administrative orders in an appellate capacity. It's recommended by our legal counsel that we change to a de novo review, which is what we're doing tonight also. And, and what they did through this, at the second meeting, was due to a recent Supreme Court case in two thousand twenty-two, within the last year, they vacated the last notice of violation, they remanded it back to the Code Enforcement Office, they said we need to do another inspection, and then they said we need to change our notice of violation, and the notice of violation now needs to say that within that first ten days, when you ask, when we ask you to contact us, discuss this with us. Tell us if you need more time, tell us if you've experienced a substantial hardship, you can't find contractors to do the work, those kind of things. We now had to add in, you have ten days to submit evidence, rebutting the Code Enforcement Officer that we've made a mistake, okay? So that inspection was done on, excuse me, on October, excuse me. That inspection was carried out on October twenty-first, so that was two Fridays ago. The notice went out in the mail today. It took us that long to prepare it again. It did result in an additional order to vacate. So currently, there are three units of the eight that are occupied. This unit was vacated for reasons of sanitation. We provided thirty days notice on this order to vacate. I'll walk you through this notice of violation. So I guess I'm gonna start with the, the change in language. So it says now, this order may be discussed with the Code Enforcement Officer. If you require additional time to correct the violation due to substantial hardship, you must contact the Code Enforcement Officer to request additional time. That's original. You must sign and return the certificate to the Code Enforcement Officer within ten days. That's original. This order shall now become final, so this is, I'm saying shall, it, it, this is new, no later than ten business days after this notice. Any, any person agreed by this order submits evidence by argu, or argument to the Code Enforcement Officer that specifies the violations are in order. So you now have ten days to rebut our, this order. Or it becomes final. So the same issues remain, there have been additional changes. So Aaron, who's on the call tonight, and he can weigh in, there's, there's issues related to the exterior of this building, substantial issues, unsafe issues, unsanitary issues, issues that are fire hazards. You can see where the, the, the deck has been patched, or the, the stairs have been patched in certain places, additional supports have been added. Again, these are not with permits, to our knowledge, these are not reviewed by any qualified person with structural knowledge. These are the egresses for these units, there's no other way. This building is sprinkled, mind you. There's, it goes on about the decks, they're, they're not properly anchored, they're unsafe, the railings aren't attached in places. They're cracked, the footings are cracked, they lack protective treatments. In this case, stringers were replaced, decks, backings were replaced, all without a permit. You can see the structural reports again in this picture. There is still rubbish that is accumulated. What you're seeing here is a, there's a, there's a well that goes down, I believe there are two wells that go down inside this building to a, to a roof above the basement, there's an accumulation, as I think I understand, Aaron, there was an, an air conditioner thrown down on top of that at the time that you inspected? There's graffiti, those are simple matters. So Aaron has then gone and, and, and tried to put the notices of violation related to those common spaces. So those common spaces fill two functions, you know, they're, they're the way that people get in and out of the building, but they're also the ways that you separate the spaces from each other for fire. There are, there are openings, you also need to be able to get firemen up and down these stairs, you need to be able to get a gurney up and down these stairs, there needs to be handrails, there's holes in the walls, there's, there's incomplete finishes, you need nosings on, on treads, you need proper places to step, you can't have openings between the common area and rooms, you can't have openings in the walls, you have to have fire doors. Those fire doors have to be self-closing, they have to be able to be latching, there can't be holes in those. Aaron goes on and points out the specific instances where he found those. Aaron really tries to deliver a high level of customer service, in that he points out all the instances where he discovers that. So you can see, Aaron had pointed out, exterior door assemblies to hallways serving Unit A, C, D, and F are not in good condition. Doors would not close. There's, at the time the inspection was done, the aisles, this is again, the, those stairs, a set of stairs, this is the one that was missing the tread for, for an extended length of time, where trash is blocking. Other pictures show, at the previous time that the inspections were done, the secondary means of escape, so you need two means of escape, always, in a unit of this size with this many people, just completely full of trash. Some very, Aaron, I, I've witnessed Aaron in the, in the Code Enforcement Office explaining to people very kindly as to the need for continuous lighting. Continuous lighting means that, that, that someone, a tenant, doesn't have access to the light switch if it's a shared hallway, so that if there's a fire, someone's not gonna lose their way in the dark to be able to get out. So this isn't, this isn't a major issue, but it's an issue that's been on the table for a very long time. Aaron pointed out loose, loose wiring, exterior to the building, going from somewhere to somewhere. There are, the units have missing outlet covers in places, there are pictures in your, in the, in the file of, of not grounded outlets, outlets above sinks, outlets and a variety of things. So I'll talk about, just for a minute, the, the order that, that we're expecting, the rehabilitation plan that we need to form on this, is these built, these units need to be deemed habitable before reoccupancy, right? So you have to have functioning plumbing systems, functioning sewer systems, you have to have finishes, you can't have, you can't just cover up things, you need to have an inspection before you close in walls. There are, there are bathrooms in this building where, where the floor moves enough that the toilet isn't attached to the ground, so where the toilet is flushing into the interior space and going down into the unit below. Aaron pointed out specifically in Unit A, a loose toilet, not fully attached to the floor. He pointed out Unit D, the floor must be able to hold the load of the toilet without movement, and then, so it goes on. He talks about, he talks about a basement, the, the access to the furnace. These are the lack of carbon monoxide detectors in the, in the basement. There's a need for multi-station smoke alarms in this building, they're missing. They're missing. They may have been removed for painting, but they're not functional. There hasn't been a, there is a sprinkler system, as I mentioned, and it hasn't been, there hasn't been a sprinkler report. We still haven't seen that report. They need, and typically, you would produce that report annually. Right? It's, we don't know whether it's functioning. There's a question as to whether or not the boiler, you know, usually there's a tag on the boiler that shows the last time it was serviced. Just want these things to be able to communicate to others that it's actually functioning. So we're asking for that the boiler is determined that it's safe by a boiler, a burner technician. There's storage tanks, excuse me, propane tanks in proximity to electrical panels. Is that, is that correct, Aaron?
Yes, that is correct. In the basement, there was full propane tanks.
There's, there'd been, the handrails aren't proper. The unit that was vacated had a lot of animal feces. It smelled like urine. It was ordered vacated. There are penetrations in the walls that open to other places that haven't been properly fire sealed. The notice of violation's rather clear in these regards. The flooring is unsanitary. These are the finishes. It goes on. It's a lengthy notice of violation. There's issues with the windows. In rooms that are habitable, you have to have a window that is able to be opened. You can't have broken windows. Seeing heating register covers. These are some pictures of the flooring. I saw similar pictures throughout. It's unsanitary. It's not an appropriate place for someone to live. You can see the patches in the walls that were done after the prior inspection. These are the missing smoke alarms in places. Aaron, I think you're saying also that these smoke alarms are oftentimes non-functional. They don't actuate with each other.
Correct. There was an error code when tested.
Minor issues, but very important. Identification numbers on the units. This one's been painted over. Missing ceiling tiles. You could see the leaking. It's been alleged that this was from the prior owner, but hasn't been corrected yet. Holes in bathroom showers. This one, Aaron, you're going to have to explain it, but for me, I don't know sprinkler systems that well. But in this case, it says, "Several sprinkler heads have loading detrimental to the sprinkler performance." And as I understand that, that there is potentially leakage, corrosion, loss of fluid. Is that generally what you've been?
So in that specific unit, what was identified was that there had new sprinkler heads installed, but the installation was not finished, and they still had their covers.
Thank you. So the sprinkler system was not fully installed? Is that what you just said?
Those sprinkler heads were not, had not been inspected. Otherwise, those caps on those sprinklers would have been removed.
So it doesn't?
Had not been fully, yeah, it has not been completely installed or inspected.
And it doesn't hold water?
That, I do not, I can't answer.
Thank you. And then this is the typical certification that we ask. So when they come in, you send them a notice of violation, inform over the issue that are going on, have a discussion, say, you go through these issues. Very much typically, it's, you know, we point these issues out. You may have an enclosure that you need, and we amend the deadlines. In this case, they're all set for 30 days. Sometimes people need longer, and so we change the corrective violation, we sign the agreement, and we move on. I did want to point out that the complaint regarding, that went to the Superior Court. It's in your packet. The complaints are related to denial of due process under count two. And I just wanted to read these complaint, item number 21, "On information and belief, the code enforcement officer has deliberately ignored other properties that are less habitable than the plaintiff's property." 22. "On information and belief, the code enforcement officer has deliberately ignored violations at other properties that are more significant than the alleged violations at the plaintiff's property." And 23. "On information and belief, these other properties are owned by city council members, or friends or families of city council members, or persons with friends or connections with the code enforcement officer." I'm going to say again that we are specifically targeting multi-unit properties in the category of six to 10 units. There are 42 properties in this category. This property has depreciated at 90%. It has the lowest value in the multi-unit category, with a value of $123,400 of total value, $15,425 per unit. That is half the amount of value of the nearest multi-unit in value. I'll tell you, because I know it, when I started here, the average value of the multi-unit family stock was $42,000. Those were primarily driven by, at the time, sleepers' properties. Those properties are now substantially higher in value, and this property's not, and it reflects that. So I wanted to open it up for questions regarding this order to vacate that is, and the compliance plan that no, none of these units may be deemed habitable, excuse me, none of these units may be occupied again until they're deemed habitable by the code enforcement officer. There are three units that are inhabited right now, and I'd like to see a plan where those three units, where they rehab a unit and are allowed to keep those tenants within the building as they bring these buildings, these units up to a habitable standard, including the common spaces and the units. I'd like this notice of violation, because it's today, or in this 10-day period where the evidence may be rebutted, I would like to request a continuance from the administration's side of this hearing to a later date. That's also the same continuance that's been requested by the council for the appellate. So I'd like to take any questions you may have. I do know that a representative for the owner is here, and you may want to ask them some questions and hear from them.
Thank you, Ian. That is going to be my intent. I want to continue the hearing today, but I will be, I will not be closing this hearing. That is not my intent to close it. But I do want to fully vet all the information that we have in front of us today. So does anyone on the council have any questions of Ian before I ask for the owner or the owner's representatives to present their case? Counselor Turmath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ian, at this time, is there any of these units that are occupied?
Three of the units are occupied, well, I'll say, currently four are occupied. One was ordered vacated today. So within the next month, we'll be looking at three units occupied.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ian before I ask the Counselor Brink?
I don't even understand why three of these units are occupied. It appears that this is an extremely unsafe building. So I'm asking myself, would I want to be there with my children, knowing that we might not make it out alive if that building has another fire, which they've already seemed to have had an explosion plus a fire? So I'm, am I to understand that you would like to postpone this, but still allow those people to still live there during this time? Or should they also vacate the building while we're waiting for, to meet again?
Well, I'll say that the prior order to vacate, which is the basis for the appeal, stands.
So they're not supposed to be there?
Well, our order to vacate is to the owner. And the order to vacate says, is you make, you vacate the building or make it safe. And we gave them until, I think it was September 19th, to make that so. It has not happened. There remains three units occupied.
Any other questions for Ian? Counselor Turmath?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would like to see these three, you know, families or folks that are still living in this property to vacate, but, you know, how would, how would that, you know, impact their life? You know what I mean? Maybe the city can help them find additional, you know, temporary housing or something. If we have a plan for that, you know, that would be, that'd be great to think about.
Thank you for that question. This is the crux of the matter on a global scale these days. It's a hard task to do when you see a property that is this unsafe, this unsanitary, when you're dealing with an eight-unit building, and you know that you're talking about putting eight families out on the street. I didn't share the photos with you. I didn't look at the photos until the Board of Appeals meeting from the fire. I was appalled. It appeared to me, from the photos, that the cause of the fire, well, the cause of the fire was because of a battery exploding in someone's personal items. And it looked to be as if that family had been moved in there into an uninhabitable state. They were living in bags. So I also think that you should hear from the property manager of this property as well. So as to how a family was moved into a unit that was, for all intents and purposes, uninhabitable, it's sad that people are that hard up, that they're willing to accept that. And that's, that is the world today. We do our best. That's why we gave a 60-days order to vacate. We felt that that was a reasonable time to address some of these issues. But to wait, to wait, to wait, and then appeal? And then, again, we've been dealing with this property this year since July. Right? This is taking up Aaron's time, my time, since July. And we're now going on November and talking about, you know, delaying until December? You know, that's, it's sad.
Deputy Mayor Hurlhey?
So this property was purchased for $37,000. What's the current average, and the city manager may know this, what's the current average value per unit on assessment? Because I know they're selling quite a bit, so you've been able to get a better idea of value per unit.
It's $80,000.
$80,000? So if brought up to code, this property is potentially worth, to the property owner, eight units, if repaired, $640,000. Correct. So I guess my comment to my fellow counselors is, I understand we have a housing crisis, but emptying this building, getting it fixed properly with the equity that should be in that property, would bring eight good units back on the market. And I think that is the point of what we do here, is to get properties in the circulation that are safe and sanitary for people to live in. So that's the comment I want to make when people are worried about people having housing. They shouldn't be living in unsafe housing. That is not, that is not what we're here to do. We're trying to make housing safe. Thank you.
So the reason that we're discussing a continuance of this hearing is because the owner chose to appeal. We need to do everything right, and that is why our council has said we need to allow this process, because the attorney wasn't here, for whatever reason. We're going to grant them that. But at any point, couldn't the owner have taken the people out of the building and provided, he would be responsible for providing them, at least to pay for where they're living? Because I'm assuming they're probably still paying rent.
I don't know.
Yep. So, I mean, he had a choice. Can you tell us if any children are living in the building right now?
I don't know whether there are. Aaron, do you know if any children were there at the time of your inspection?
There's two teenagers living there in Unit F.
So the DHHS visit, there could always be that kind of a visit as well, to see if it's a safe situation for a child to be in. All right. So I think I'd like to let the property manager or the owner's representative come up and present their case, please. And just say who you are, please, sir.
Sure thing. My name is Robert Flannery, owner of the property. I've got a couple of comments. Ian had told me and told my attorney that he would recommend that this get continued until he's available to represent me in this case. And then Ian went on to prosecute the case in front of you. There's a lot of facts that are misrepresented here. He did not tell you what the current state of the building is right now, as far as where the particular tenants that we've worked to evict out of the property that have caused some of the problems in the building, and we're on full mode remodel as we speak. So he failed to tell you about where most of these apartments are now that have been recently remodeled. We have not re-rented those properties yet, but...
Mr. Flannery, you just said something, though, that really begs a question.
Sure.
You said you're in full renovation mode or rehab mode, but are there any permits been pulled?
So what we do is, if a tenant's been evicted or a tenant moves out, like, for example, Ian says, "Why would you put somebody in there in bags and put them into..." No, those tenants had been there before we bought the building. They lived that way. And then after 2018, when we bought the building, then you couldn't evict anybody, and then they were getting funds. So you couldn't evict anybody up until recently, anyway. So we were stuck with certain tenants in that building.
Right. But have you pulled any permits for any of the rent?
Remodel, to go in there, put carpet down and paint and do things like that, aren't required. Permits aren't required for that.
Well, I think there was other work that was in the, what was presented to us that would require permits.
Oh, so there was some steps and things like that that were replaced.
So full renovation, I mean, full?
Well, when I say renovation, we're going through and remo, let me take those words back. We're remodeling the apartments that were in disrepair.
So you're saying that the remodel doesn't require any permits? That's your, that's what you're saying right now?
In some cases, that's true.
Plumbing, electrical, and structural?
Yes, and we've done plenty, we've done plenty of electrical with permits.
What about plumbing?
Plumbing with those toilets?
We've done permits with, for plumbing as well.
So, Aaron, can I just verify that that, Aaron, have we had permits pulled for those things?
There has, there was a electrical permit pulled back in 2018, I believe.
But that still wouldn't be in effect, would it?
No.
Okay. What about any plumbing permits?
There's been other recent electrical permits pulled as well.
I haven't seen any recent electrical, plumbing, ele... I haven't seen any recent electrical plumbing, building, or any updates regarding the sprinkler report that was asked for as well.
So October 21st was the date that you last wore in the building, Aaron?
Correct.
So that wasn't that long ago?
So, yes, that's correct. And we, we, so one of the things that we agreed that there would be a 10-day response period after we've got the new notice of violations, because all other notice of violations don't exist anymore. The only notices of violation that exist are the ones that were issued today.
I got that.
Okay.
But they were there October 21st, and I just didn't see anything in their report that detailed this extensive remodel that you're discussing.
You can ask Aaron. He can tell you that we've been in there and, and they're looking good in there as well. But you won't hear that from Ian, and you won't hear that probably from, from Aaron as well.
Well, Aaron's got his hand up. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, so just to comment, the only notice of violation that was vacated was the one from July, when we did a full building inspection. So that one was vacated. The other notices of violation would still be in effect, which is why the one that was sent today references the past due violations from 2018. Unit E that had the fire was newly painted, did have new carpet in there. They had a clean, pardon me.
Does that work, that look?
Sorry.
Guess not.
I'll also mention that these notice of violations were supposed to be out last Monday, before my attorney left for his vacation or trip or wherever he was going. And so he was supposed to have time to review that in that 10-day period, but they conveniently issued them today, a week later, after they knew he was...
I don't think that, I mean, sometimes it takes a while to do this, so I don't think that that's really fair.
Well, we were told we were going to get it last Monday.
Well, I'm just going to say that we're here to listen, we're gonna, we're gonna, not going to complete the hearing today, we are going to continue it, but this is your opportunity. This is all recorded, and it is a legal proceeding, so that's why when I ask questions about permits being pulled and things, those are things that are, you know, they're facts.
So, I guess at this point, you know, I'm going to let the due process play out with my attorney when he, when he's able to be here, because I think that's important, because the, the way the city is operated as far as code enforcement towards myself and my business is, is, is not, not right.
Are you still collecting rents from all of your tenants?
We have three tenants left in the building.
Are you collecting rents from them?
From, from tenants that are in the units, yes. We've evicted and got rid of the, the bad apples in the building. We're not collecting rent from anybody but tenants that are...
And that fourth one that, well, he said that there was a fourth one that's being ordered to vacate.
Yes, and, and it's mostly because of the tenant's cleanliness. I mean, I can't, you know, if I decide I'm going to, I want to evict that tenant, and I go into the Springville District Court and Pine Tree Legal steps up and says, you're evicting this person because they're not clean? I'm going to be laughed out of that courtroom.
Well, I didn't, I'm not going to argue with you about what I've heard. Deputy Mayor Hurlhey?
Just a comment, you don't have to have a reason to evict a person. Just 30-day notice.
A 30-day notice, you still have to give them a reason why you're evicting them.
No, you don't.
No, I'm a landlord, you don't have to.
Anyway, I just wanted to ascertain that you are, in fact, collecting rent from the three...
Yes, why wouldn't I be?
Well, there's an order to vacate the building, but that's...
No, there's only an order to vacate one unit.
One unit right now? Okay. Aaron, go ahead.
And I'm not, and I'm not, and that one that came out, the order today to vacate, I'm not opposed to that.
Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, I apologize for the interruption. So there, there was an electrical permit pulled on back in August as well. So hopefully those will address any of those issues, and they'll be inspected by the electrical inspector. And as we continue this process, again, would really like to see those sprinkler reports as soon as possible.
And again, Aaron, I disagree with that, because my electrician does have those permits.
Yeah, he pulled one on, in August.
But no plumbing permits?
I have not seen a plumbing permit, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the counselors? Counselor Termath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just more a comment, though. I mean, you know, when, you know, when you do business in the community, I, I would just have to say that, you know, it is a responsibility of, of the ownership, you know, to make sure that, that the facility or the apartments are in a, in a state where, you know, you're providing health, safety, and welfare for your tenants, you're collecting rent for your tenants, you know? And, and you, you just have to have that personal responsibility to make sure that, you know, things do get cleaned up and issues that need to be addressed are addressed. And I'm sure these photos, you know, they speak for themselves. It's a squalor, so I just say that.
Well, let me, let me respond to that. So, I'm in the business of buying buildings that need work like this, and we improve those buildings over time, and we have a track record of doing that. And both Ian and, and Aaron would testify to that, that that's what we do, and we do a good job of doing that. And that's why, you know, Ian has come here and prosecuted the case like, you know, the sky is falling here, but that's not necessarily the case. And he's painted a pretty good picture of, you know, of doom and gloom there, but that's not necessarily the case what's going on there. And, and to, to further that, you know, he, he was trying to say that it's the least, the valuation of that building is the least of all buildings in Sanford. Well, I did, recently, in the last month, had a bank appraisal done on that building, and it's appraised at $1.1 million, which is around $125,000 a unit. So, that information that he presented is in some ways incorrect.
I'm just going to say I find that figure absolutely incredible. So, I mean, after, I've walked by the building, I've looked at the building, it's like, I didn't come into this hearing never seeing the building. Granted, I haven't been inside, but I looked at all those pictures, so I find that really difficult to believe.
Well, those pictures don't exist. Those were snapshot in time.
Mayor Mistraccio, is it correct this is a hearing and everything that's said in here is recorded and has to be truthful?
Well, they're not under oath, but it is a hearing.
That's a truthful, I'm not making that number up.
I'm not, I'm just asking her a question.
To me, that's just further evidence that you have equity to do this properly.
Right. There's, there's a couple of ways to, to look at that. I would just like to ask, how long again have you owned the building?
2018.
So that is four years, because...
We, we've put over $200,000 into this building, believe it or not.
Well, if you put a sprinkler system in, that would pretty much cover it, I would say.
No, sprinkler system is $40,000.
That, I'm not going to argue with you about it. This is your chance to present your case, and it's on the record for all of us, and we will continue at another hearing. And is there anybody else that has anything that they'd like to ask? Counselor Stackpole?
Like somebody's opinion, if the propane tanks that are located near the electrical service, what's the potential for like a blast radius or whatever from something like that? Clearly, it's going to do significant damage to that building, but is it going to do damage to the neighbors, to the neighborhood, to the cars that are parked out front? This sounds like a pretty serious matter, and not something that, as a community, we necessarily want to sit around and wait to have fixed with the potential that, you know, we've all seen those propane blasts that happened in, I think it was Massachusetts or something like that. I realize, what I'm talking about is, I realize we don't have underground gas mains, but the, the destruction that happened because of those could be similar to what's going to happen in this, in this building. I mean, we're all concerned for the safety, I'm going to say, not only for the people that are, are living in that building, but now I'm a little concerned for the safety of others in the neighborhood, too. Do you, do you have an answer for that? And, and that apparently has been sitting in that state for four years?
Are you asking me about a propane tank?
I'm asking you, there, there was a picture that said there were propane tanks located in proximity to electrical services.
I don't, that, that was, if that came out, that was today, and I did not see that.
Aaron, do you have your hand up about this? Let me just see if Aaron's got a answer to it.
What, you were sitting back there, I saw you sitting back there when Ian did his presentation. That's how I got my information. So, I don't know why you never heard of it until just...
Correct, yes, yeah. It's never been any notice of violation.
Aaron, go ahead.
Just now, you just find this out just now?
Okay, okay, listen, Aaron's going to answer the question.
In the basement, there is a 20-pound propane tank, what, like what you would see used for a grill, or, you know, for cooking, for a cookout. It was next to the, it's about five feet away from the electrical panels, which they cannot be stored into the basement. Whether there could be an injury, I, I don't know what the blast would be, if that was to malfunction and there be a spark. Obviously, that could be easily moved outside where it needs to be, so it would not pose a danger.
Yeah, and I believe, it might have been one of the contractors that put it in there recently, but it, it certainly wasn't there on, on the last inspection.
So are you going to move it out?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
When?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any clarifications? Ian, did you want to add anything before I continue the hearing to a date in December?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I wanted to say that, that I think it's important for the, the notice of violation to, to settle in, and that's a really good reason for the continuance. It sounds like you might have some disagreement with the, with the findings of the code enforcement officer. And for reasons of due process, you should continue the hearing.
Okay. So, I will continue this hearing to a date in December. Most likely December 20th. Okay?
Yes, and so it'll have to be noticed?
Does it have to be noticed the same way if it's a continuation of the same public hearing?
And it must be recorded. So it'll, it'll be both noticed and filed in the Registry of Deeds.
Okay. I, it doesn't make me, if it was my preference, if it wasn't the recommendation of our legal counsel to, to do this, I would be willing to go forward with this, this evening, but it is clear that the attorney will likely appeal and claim violation of due process as he has requested a continuance. So, I think it's best to just let this go on a little bit further. It seems like it's been four years in the making, but let's just hang in there a little longer. So, hearing is continued. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you.
So, 22-520-01, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 11 Kimball Street, what does the city council find are the facts, and what does the city council adjudged? I would like a motion to table this item until the December 20th meeting. Deputy Mayor Hurlhey?
I'd like a motion to table this item until the December 20th meeting.
And Counselor Stackpole?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flannery. Did he leave already? Oh, sorry. Kiki doki. 22-507-01, this is a hearing to determine whether 19 Winter Street, identified as tax map K28, Lot 54, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book 14973, Page 809, and mortgage record at Book 14973, Page 810, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate. We will let you, I'll declare the hearing open, and Ian, proceed, please.
Thank you very much. So this property is owned by a Mark Ponbryant. He's owned it since 2006. I'd like to say, just I'm going to skip ahead here for a moment, actually, excuse me, this is the deed. He bought it from Albert Witten and Linda Witten. There's a mortgage on this property, or at least to the best of my knowledge, there is. It's owned by the Wittens at 308 High Street. It's located on Winter Street. I'll tell you that I'm working on a dangerous building to the left and across the street, 18 Winter Street, so forgive me if I get confused between 18 and 19. And a garage was recently demolished there, as well as removal of the back deck. I'm going to skip over to the photos to give you a sense of where this property stands. This is one of your main streets. This property is in an undone state. It's been like this for a substantial amount of time. You can see wall covering, tivec in this case. The top half of the building is generally undone. Some of the trim has been painted, some has not been for a long time. Even in this picture, you can see the, the front door boarded, and you can see the garage in the back. The front doors of the garage are rotted. You can see where plants have, have grown through the garage. Here's a close-up of that door boarded up. You can see the unpainted siding, at least partly up the side of this building. There is an electrical meter, there's an electrical meter, there's water in sewer. The water is on. This is a very old building permit. There's no, no information on it anymore. There's been a series of permits over the years. And this is how it looks inside. It's, looks like it's in a state of construction. I think it's questionable when the last time anybody has come here. It's generally full of construction equipment. That's asphalt chingle, ladders, fair amount of drywall, electrical, and walls open. There is a door, but that's the backside of the boarded door. Here's some other pictures of the front room, just generally in an unfinished state. Picture of the basement, looks like there's just piles of trash, looks like there's some plumbing. I don't think there's any functional plumbing in this building. There's piles of debris in the backyard, different construction material. It's evident that some things have been moved around in the last couple of weeks. You can see some boarding on the garage. There's piles of debris currently under piles of leaves. Looks like a large tree was removed in the past, and, and some things were moved out of the way. Some of the, some fencing leaned up against the garage, trash and cans, propane tanks. The garage is boarded. Here's the close-up of those garage doors. You can see the, the plant overgrowth going up and, and into the building, and the rot around it. This is a picture from the neighbor's property, as, as you look down. And for some reason, there's a, a large missing fence panel in there. It looks like the next-door neighbor, or possibly this owner, I'm not sure, had installed a, a fence, so they wouldn't have to see this. Windows are broken. This back window is broken, and you can see that it's generally undone. There's construction material piled up on the side. This back door is boarded. There's a light on. There's open electrical exterior panels. It looks like trying to proceed, but it's, it's taking a very long time. I would suggest, you know, given its state, a, you know, a determination of dangerousness, the outcome here is a rehabilitation plan. So you want to see some sort of willingness and ability to accomplish it, and you want to have some timeframes around that. So when is the expectation that's going to get done? So I, I would expect that that would be the outcome of, of what you're doing today. I did want to point out that there's a balance on, and let me, sorry, I'll finish through the, the pictures, generally exterior photos here. There's a balance on, on sewer, and the property taxes are delinquent and overdue. Looking through the Registry of Deeds, it looks like this has been a, in a, in a, there's been a lien every year on this property, so has not kept up with property taxes. Just to give you a sense of that, the assessed value is $100,000. Just to give you a sense of that, the assessed value is $107,000, and it's depreciated at The notices of hearing were done by sheriff. This is the sheriff service, and this is the sheriff's service to the mortgagee. It was also advertised in the newspaper for three successive weeks. The city has been communicating about the vacant building status of this. It's been, it had not obtained a vacant building license 2019. It was re-noticed again in 2021. And the owner, so still in 2021, has not obtained a vacant building license. And then in, in September, had received, had obtained a vacant building license. There is a vacant building license active on this property, so code enforcement has been in communication with them. There is a general construction permit open that was issued on October 3rd, 2022, so attempting to make progress. You can open a building permit, but the prior permit didn't appear to have any activity on it for the maximum time that it was open. There have been, this is the police report. I wouldn't say there's much to report in here. And then I'll just run through my notes here. Aaron, Ian, am I forgetting anything on this particular property that is worth pointing out?
You've been covering everything pretty much. I believe the property was vacated in 2005 or '06 after a fire, and has not been reoccupied since.
Yep, so the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied. It doesn't appear to be, some of these violations, just the most recent violations, these were from September 27th. Lack of address numbers on the building, accumulation of trash, missing sewer vent pipes, exterior, missing exterior doors, missing siding on the upper half, missing exterior trim are peeling, flaking, and chipped. And these, it's just generally shows a lack of care, lack of continuous attention, and inadequate maintenance, and this constitutes a hazard to health and safety. It appears to be vacant and abandoned. I mentioned that there's windows missing, boarded. There's absence of personal property indicating abandonment. It seems to be a fire hazard because it's not occupied, could be broken into. It's unsafe and unsanitary, piles of debris in the backyard, deteriorated. I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Ian, and I was gonna say that I remember when my mom lived across the street when this fire happened, and it's really, literally been in construction since then.
Well, this is one of your main streets, and this is what's presented to the public when they, when the traveling public, when they pass through Sanford on a daily basis. So, you know, at a minimum, this very much is a public nuisance. It has spillover effects to the neighboring properties. This is what people see when they visit your town, so.
So is.
My opinion, it behooves you to address it.
Before we get the owner or the owner representative up to speak, is there any, does anyone have any questions, clarifying questions for me, Ian? Is there someone here?
I don't know.
Oh, there seems to be. Are you, Mark?
I am, ma'am.
Oh, well, come on up, Mark.
Thank you, ma'am.
I got so many questions. You know, I usually, and I'm gonna lay this out there, I'm the type of person that makes people mad when I speak, so I'm gonna hold my tongue and ask you guys to speak.
That's okay, I'm like that too, so go right ahead. I'm okay with it.
All right. So, there was an immediate thing that came to my mind when I'm watching this, and the fact that somebody got into the cellar to take pictures when the door is screwed shut. I was there yesterday, it was still screwed shut. I'm there every day, if not every other day. I've been working on the house. Codes Department, they know it. I speak to them all the time. Ask them, they drive, I drive them crazy. The girls know all about it. The girls have been great, great with ideas. One of them even helped come up with the color of the house. Thank you. Okay? So, I'm not being coy, I'm not being, but I'm trying. And as you stated earlier, Ms. Mayor, it is my house. I've been doing everything legally, as Mr. Buck can answer that question. We first, we met, okay? I have not changed anything, any shape, anyhow, from what I'm doing with that house from the time that I spoke to Mr. Buck. I've got comments on the house being, it's a dollhouse, it's Sanford's wedding cake house. I'm trying. So, I can't believe that I got these little violations, but yet I got a permit. I've always had a permit. I think there was once when I was sick, I didn't have a permit. I'm a newfound owner of diabetes. It helps you out, let me tell you. So, I'm kind of upset just seeing that cellar door right now, especially when, throughout the whole summer, the codes have been down there inspecting the property. This year alone, I just had $10,000 roughly of electrical work done to that house, hence the lights on. The boards are, the doors are boarded up with the cooperation of the police department, along with the lights constantly on, so they can see around the property. So, they know that nobody's breaking into the property. Again, I have an issue with this cellar door, because I try to keep it as tight as possible. So, I'm kind of amiss, and I'm working on a little bit of anger, so I apologize.
So, did, are you questioning how they got the pictures of the cellar?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm questioning how they got the pictures.
And did you want to comment on that? Go ahead. Come on up, and let's have an answer to that.
Please.
It was taken from the exterior.
Thank you.
Doesn't help me, I'm sorry.
Do you have a, you said there's electrical work, $10,000 worth of electrical work, and you did have a permit pulled for that?
Current permit for both the electrical and the plumbing.
Do you understand our concerns about the length of time? I mean, let's face it, 2006?
And I understand, again.
In an area that, you know, we're really working to.
Yes, ma'am. And you can see how nice the house is coming out. It is coming out very nice. I get compliments from the neighbors all around. It actually helped, from what I believe, my neighbors sell their house of just recently, a few days, $220,000. I had invested in that house three, four years ago, and we sold it.
So it's a good time to get the house finished and sold?
It would seem that my house is helping theirs, so yes, ma'am, I fully agree. So, you know, I'm trying.
So if this.
But my, my deal is, I'm not intending on selling it. I want to give it to my granddaughters, my intention, always has been. Mr. Buck can confirm that. That's the, it was going back to its original historical roots. If you look in the windows that they took, the stained glass door, the original trim work that you see in the pictures, I went all over God's country to get that, okay? I'm trying. I want to give a gift to my family, that's where it is. No intention in selling it. My intention is finishing it. I had some due dates that I was trying. I got sick. I apologize, but I'm trying, okay? And then the fact that they say that I haven't been around that house, is nonsense. I mean, neighbors can tell you, anybody who noticed me, I could tell you. The codes office could tell you. You know, I changed a few things just to make it historical, you know?
Well, I can just, I'm just gonna ask you, because I walk by that area, I live near the.
I think I've seen you a few times.
My mom lived across the street, and I haven't seen a lot of activity in that particular building. It looks kind of the same to me as it has for a number of years. And I have lost, I grant you, the years go fast, and I don't know how many there are, but it is, at least, I would say, my mom hasn't been there, and she moved, and I'm trying to think, it hasn't changed since 2014, 2015? Have you really, what, did you put a little siding up maybe?
Oh, no, ma'am. The codes can vouch that it's changed quite a bit.
It just doesn't, I'm not gonna.
Probably doesn't feel like it, because it's been so long, I'll give you that.
Okay. I'm just trying to, maybe what we need to hear, and I would like to hear from the city, is the benefits of doing this process, because it actually puts things more, in a more concrete way, and everybody agrees on how it's going to be done, including you, so.
Well, I, I agree with you, but you already have a plan on file, and I've been following it religiously. The codes department can vouch for that.
Is Aaron available to discuss that, Ian? Go ahead, Aaron.
Hello? Yeah, so, any questions for me specifically? The, there are active permits right now to, do I believe, the finished drywall and insulation for the remaining, of the remainder of the house, is it downstairs?
That's inside, not outside?
Yeah, inside. That's all I've seen on the building permit.
Is that what you agree with?
No. I'm a little lost on that one. So, it has, on the outside, it has siding, okay? Broken windows, I got to address one, then actually it's.
Well, the whole building isn't sided, though. The whole building is not sided.
Um, no.
Okay.
It's three-quarter sided. Yes, ma'am. The thing that I was finishing, and it was actually a few weeks ago, when I made plans that can be confirmed, other than Aaron, is the codes. I went in there, and we did a few things that I had made mention I was going to do. Everything I made mention that I was going to do to the codes, I did, okay? Especially the eaves and such, those are all buttoned up finally. So I got sheet rock, which was just approved. I got insulation on the second floor. The thing that was agreed upon, again, through the codes, the young ladies through the codes and so forth, was the plumbing was going to be the last. Hence, Mr. Aaron should have known that, and there wouldn't have been a picture with the stink pipe through the roof, because he would have known that. The door, as you can notice in the pictures, there is a door there, it's been there, a door there, and can be confirmed by Mr. Cole, Jamie, because we fought about it, he says that you didn't need a front door, we got two on the back. I'm here. I like the front door. You should see pictures of it as of last year with the front door. It looks really good. Again, I'm trying. I've been following my plan that was rigorously set out for me when I first started this. I've been following it all along. I don't think there's any need to push anything. If you're asking me for a timeline, I expect it to be done by spring of next year. I want my granddaughter in there.
Aaron, did you have anything that you needed to either rebut or add?
No. I believe Mr. Palm Bryant was in the code office talking with, and inspections were done by Jeannie Wood recently, this summer, for some of those items on the previous building permit, and then I believe a new permit was issued for the remainder of those items. It would be great to have it done by this spring, to have it completed and reoccupied, obviously, since 2006, having an unoccupied building is a detriment to the building itself and to the neighborhood. It's exciting to hear that it could be reoccupied this spring. So I hope that plan does come to fruition, instead of continuing to not finish and letting the, you know, permit get to a point where it needs to either be extended or expired.
Counsel Stackpole has a question.
Yeah, I'd just like to get clarified whether, obviously, the property owner believes a plan exists. Does, does a plan exist?
A plan does exist, which structural engineer approval and arrow?
And I understand you believe that. I guess I'm asking the city people, do you know that a plan exists, or did a plan exist that's now expired?
Aaron, go ahead.
Yeah, so the new building permit that was issued, I believe it was at the beginning of October, does have the remainder of the items for the interior to be, to be finished. And I'm sorry, I don't remember if there was something on the exterior on that as well. I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize for that. But that was reissued with a new building permit at the beginning of the month.
Okay, and, and is that sufficient, Ian? Is that plan equal to what would come out of this process if we followed through with
So, what I'd like to see here is, in my opinion, this building appears abandoned, okay? People walking down the street, people passing by, we've already talked. It looks like it's in disrepair. It looks like it's undone. It's looked like that since 2005. I just heard Mr. Palm Bryant say that he's gonna wrap this up in spring, okay? So what I would like is to be able to put a rehabilitation plan in place for him. So, and that's pretty normal. We've gotten used to this process. You can come into the city manager's office, put that official plan in place, carry out that plan, and be done with it.
And as you have said, if there's personal illness, or if there's some other reason why that plan can't be finished in the time period that.
Yes, our standard language is that if you need an extension, contact our office within 30 days of it expiring. Talk about why you need that extension, and most likely we'll grant you an extension. It's pretty normal.
Go ahead, Mark. You had something that you wanted to add?
Yes, ma'am, I do. So, I got an issue. So what, the way I'm understanding it is, that I went through all this, regardless whether it's my home or not, I went through the structural engineer harassment, or hassle. I went and appeased everybody, including the police department, and kept, and I secure the building every day. I'm there. If I'm not, it's every other day, okay? I got a plan into effect that I've been following, which the codes office can verify, and I've been following it religiously. I don't see why there's a rehabilitation plan when I'm gonna follow the plan that I originally approved, and again, approved, constantly. Now, what seems to me is that you guys have a problem with my time. Again, as you stated earlier, it is my building, okay? If somebody were to ask me, "Mr. Palm Bryant, would you get siding on there within the next 60 days?", not a problem, but you asked me. Not dragged me by lies out front of this committee, or council meeting, and very, I still got a problem with somebody breaking into my cellar and taking a picture in my cellar. I have an issue with that. Especially since I've been following every rule, law, that you guys have put out front of me, and now you're asking me to go through another, hurdles and hurdles, sorry, my dry throat, for a rehabilitation plan, so, and follow this, if I don't comply with that, that means you can put your hands more onto my property. See where I'm going with this? I don't approve. You have a plan. I've been following it religiously. Codes can verify that. If you want me to do something quicker, ask me. Don't order me, please. Just ask me. I've been doing good, the neighbors like it, even the property owner next to me really appreciates it. So, you know, please.
Well, I just want to say that if I was the person who had a house pending, the house next door, I would be wanting your house to be done very quickly. That's how I would feel. And, and I just want to say that this process that we use, 19 Winter Street has been on our radar for a long time, but we put off, hoping that you would come in and follow through on a plan. So this wasn't the first house, you can, you can go back through the years that they've been doing this, and in the two years that I've been mayor, is we have looked at these very carefully. This moved to the front because we thought it can no longer be ignored. We're working on 18 Winter. We want to have the entrance into our community. That is a beautiful house that you have. We want it to be.
Yes, ma'am.
The beautiful house that it can be.
And it will be.
Because we appreciate those old, the old homes that we have. So whatever we do here today, it will be in conjunction with you. Whatever happens at this hearing, we will see as we go forward, but there's a reason why we do this, and we do this in a very formal way, because we tend to get better results than just asking. And I'm not speaking about you personally, but just asking people or trying to, you know, move them along in a way has not worked, which is why we have this process now. So, just looking at it from our point of view. So I saw down there. looking at it from our point of view. So, I saw down there, Counselor Martel had his hand up. Did anybody else, just before I go, and then Counselor Termath? So, first, Counselor Martel.
Hello, and thanks for coming out tonight. It looks like the work that you've done is great.
Thank you.
I just had a question around, and I think one of the biggest concerns is the siding. What is your current plan with the siding?
In some of the pictures, sorry, finish. In some of the pictures, as you can see, bundles of siding that are done recently, painted within the few months, are actually sitting on the floor, ready to be installed. Our next show-up date was to do siding, and within the next few weeks, put a driveway in. But I have a legal issue with kind of the town and the church with the boundary on that side. I'm going to go ahead and clear it up. As you can see, I already did. You know, I took out the trees. I removed some of the stumps. You know, I'm just going to actually go ahead and do it. I'm not waiting for the church anymore, or the diocese, whoever is doing that. We're going to finish that. Then, the painting of, I speak, the spring, is the final painting. You know, I'm going to finish some of the trim while I still have the warm weather to whiten it out, you know? But that will be finished. And most of the siding should be within the next few weeks. Just because I have it, it's already been installed.
Thank you.
Counselor Termath?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Palm Bryant, who, do you know who took the photos that was presented here tonight from inside the residence?
I have no idea, but I have every intention, as my God has a soul, to me.
I think they were taken through the windows, and that's what we heard. And I can't assume, I would never think that our community development director would say anything but the truth. So, that was already stated, that they were taken through the windows.
Yeah.
Absolutely, because I just want to make sure, because, I mean, I figured that the city is on the up and up when it comes to, you know, honoring property rights owners, you know? And I just want to make sure that there was nothing, you know, accusatory with the language, you know what I mean, on that, on that comment.
Trying to choose my words carefully, sorry.
I appreciate that.
So, I was there every day for the past week. Some of the pictures that were just taken were just taken, okay? Especially in the order of looking through the windows, some were just moved within a day, okay? So, I'm sitting here going, "I got an issue." I know for a fact that cellar door was screwed shut, okay? Any broken windows? I would have noticed it. No. And the neighbors next door would have let me know, you know, if somebody smashed a window. I didn't notice it. And I was down in the cellar, not in the cellar, outside the cellar, sorry, where I put grated rock where I'm going to put a cement pad. Okay? So, I would have noticed it, all right? I do have exception, lack of better words, I'm sorry. The pictures in the phrasing of the pictures, Mr. Aaron should have known there was permits in effect, things were happening as they were by conferring with other Codes Officers. All the rest, new. Why am I here for false allegations? And I'm sorry, but that's my opinion. I did ask Mr. Anderson to look into it, as I'm going to now ask Mr. Anderson to look into the cellar door. Because as of quarter to five this afternoon, that cellar door is still screwed in.
When you were saying Mr. Anderson, you mean Chief Anderson, right?
Chief Anderson, yes, ma'am, I do.
I was trying to think, who is that?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just didn't compute, because I don't think of him as Mr. Anderson. So, I have, can I just, as a city manager, did you have something that you wanted to add to this, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir. First, Mr. Palm Bryant, I admire the lines on the house. I always look for the eve lines and the roof. Then, I'm down to the foundation walls, and it's got good bones.
I'm a fan. You know this from the start.
Very good.
Sorry to keep on bringing it up.
No, no, no problem. Very good lines. That's a property that I would tackle. And I look at the interior pictures, and I note the quality, the stud work and everything. So, there's all of that.
Thank you.
I do note that in the pictures that show the interior work, I see the reflections of the glass. The pictures were taken through the window. I can see the reflections of leaves. In the interior shots, I can see those taken through the window. I know you have an issue with the basement photograph, as though somebody had entered that basement. When you look at the photograph, I can see all the leaves on the ground. It was taken through a basement window. So, I just wanted to clear that up, that no improper egress or entrance was made to your property, sir.
Can I have a copy of the picture?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, they're all public record? They're on the, our agenda, on the city website? The whole thing is there?
As of today?
Last Friday.
Last Friday.
As part of the whole agenda. If you go to the complete agenda packet...
Because I don't have any of that that I printed off.
It's on the SanfordMaine.org. It's there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But again, I admire the lines of that house. You're going to have a great facility. What I'm hearing here this evening is just a matter of timing, you know, to at minimum get the exterior finished up.
Buttoned up.
Right? And then, you can knock out the interior, you know?
That's the course that we're in. Winter is inside, yeah?
Absolutely. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from counselors? Nope. Well, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for participating. And you did it very appropriately, so I appreciate that. Ian, did you have anything you wanted to add, or can I close this hearing?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
All right. I will close the hearing. 22-508-01, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 19 Winter Street, what does the City Council find are the facts, and what does the City Council adjudged? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence, and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property, has been owned by Mark Palm Bryant since 2006. The property is in a state of disrepair. The building has been vacant and unoccupied for an extended length of time. Construction activity starts and stops, and the property is inadequately maintained and is dilapidated, constituting a hazard to health and safety. B, the property appears to be abandoned, as defined in 30A MRSA Section 3106B and City Code, Chapter 149-6.3, as evidenced by no habitable occupancy, doors and windows are broken and boarded, personal property and furnishings are absent from the property, the interior is undone, and construction material fills the interior, and is a fire hazard, unsafe and unsanitary. There are piles of debris in the backyard. The property has deteriorated, including siding and exterior walls. The garage is rotting, and vegetation has grown through the structure. C, the property was noticed for violations for abandonment on July 22, 2019, and again on March 31, 2021. Excuse me. D, the most recent inspection on September 27, 2022, found violations of City Code, Chapter 90-13B5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, as adopted by reference. Lack of address numbering, Chapter 304.3. Accumulation of waste material, Chapter 308.1. Missing plumbing, vent piping, Chapter 504.3. Missing exterior door, Chapter 304.1.3. Missing siding on upper half of structure, 304.1. Exterior trim on house and garage is peeling, flaking, and chipped, 304.1. These violations are indicative of a lack of care, continuous attention, and inadequate maintenance, constituting a hazard to health and safety. Property taxes are delinquent and overdue, indicating inadequate maintenance and abandonment. The property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance, because the building constitutes a hazard to health or safety, because of inadequate maintenance, lack of continuous care, and abandonment. Property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. An abandoned and vacant building that sits for more than 90 days without constant maintenance has deteriorated and is dilapidated, is a fire hazard, is inadequately maintained, it is unsanitary enough to be uninhabitable. Uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupant's health and safety. A blight to the neighborhood and Main Street, and unless abated or satisfactory rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion? Counselor Stackpole.
So moved. And after the second, I have a question.
Yes, Counselor Brink.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion by the council.
Ian, can you just, for the sake of all of us, but also for the public, when you talk about the formation of a rehabilitation plan, I want to go back to the statement of, "Please, please don't, don't tell me, ask me," okay? When you come together with the property owner to do that rehabilitation plan, that process is, I understand there are code violations, and code violations have to be fixed by law. But, for instance, is it something like, when you, can the property owner come to you and say, "Well, I want to get the siding done by this time"? In other words, I'm trying to get out of the pointing fingers of, "You're going to do this, we're going to make you." It's kind, it's more of a coming together of, "This what needs to be done. Can you give us some kind of timeline of when you might be..." Am I presenting this correctly?
I think you're presenting it very accurately.
Okay, so...
How it works is someone proposes a rehabilitation plan to the city manager.
If they propose it...
They do.
You give them some criteria what needs to be included, but it's their plan.
And 90% of the time, 95% of the time, I mean, they're proposing the right thing. We're very willing to work with the owner. Sometimes, the owner is actually seeking a new certificate of occupancy. You know, that might be the case in here, and that's something that someone might want for resale. But sometimes, people are just seeking a deemed habitable, because it may be their own house, for example, or they're intending to live in it. So, they just want to be able to reoccupy it. So, the order that the City Council may approve is broad enough that it's as determined by the code enforcement officer. Correct the minimum deficiencies, demonstrate the ability and willingness, propose a timeframe. I heard spring today. I mean, you know, if he said summer, we'd be willing to work with him on that. And complete what you said. We don't have to get into the minutia. You know, you're going to have a complete building when you're done. In some ways, we don't really care when the siding gets on the side, just as long as you bring it back into a habitable state in that timeframe that you, that you promise. And if you need an extension for some unforeseen, you know, aspect, you can request that, and we'll have a discussion about it.
I mean, that sounds like a good middle-of-the-road here to me, but...
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I guess, you know, as I'm sitting here, I'm listening to Mr. Palm Bryant, and I'm listening to you. If 16 years ago, we had had this process, I think the city would sit here and say, "As long as you prioritize the outside." Because I understand you're taking your time to build something nice for your granddaughter. I get that. You're doing it on your own time. But I think from our perspective, if the outside looked okay, I'm not sure I care how long the inside takes you. It's really, we're looking at something that, we want the outside done, we want it to look nice. And if you're picking a way at making it look, you know, doing fine woodwork on the inside for your granddaughter, and taking a little, and taking longer on that, I have no issue with that. I just want it to look like, nice on the outside, so it has, it has appearances nice for your neighbors, nice for the people coming into our community. We're going to be making a $25 million investment with roads, even more than that, because the city and the state have to put in some money. And, you know, that's an important property for us. I think you, I think you are doing a beautiful job. I think, is Ty, your brother next door, who did the other property, they did a beautiful job. There's some nice properties that have been redone there. And I know at least one other has been your family, maybe two others have been your family. You could, same, same, well, it's same last name.
I don't remember.
You don't have to. You don't have to. It's not important.
Really, at this point, we're at the point where we're deliberating. So, if you just wait a minute, and we'll, let me, let the council finish, and then if you want to just say one more thing, I will allow that before we vote.
That's all, that's all. I just, it would be nice to see it looking better on the outside in particular. Thanks.
Counselor Hanselman?
Oh, I'll be really honest. I typically don't take issue with our dangerous building hearings and feel really comfortable moving forward them. I am hesitating a little bit on this, in the sense that, and I feel like there's a real initiative to get the work done. We have a current permit that expires, is this good for a year? Sorry, I should know that. It's good for a year.
They take it one out every two years.
Gotcha.
Sixteen years.
No, and I hear that. But I guess I'm just wondering, there are some costs for us to move forward, correct, from a city standpoint, to move forward with declaring a dangerous building and filing the deeds and so forth?
It's actually very minimal.
Minimal, okay. Is it possible that we can, if we didn't move forward with a dangerous building or nuisance, can we, there's no other ability to put a timeframe on it, is the concern, correct?
Right, right.
So, we'd have to trust Mr. Palm Bryant to get it done, as he's stating.
Yeah, and I'm hearing Counselor Hurley, too. It's, you know, from an administrative standpoint, if he's coming in and saying, "I'm going to prioritize the exterior first", that's what his rehabilitation plan says. "I'm going to get the exterior done by next summer," you know, "and I'm going to get work on the interior for the next year," or that 18 months by which that permit expires. That sounds like a good plan.
No, no, and I don't disagree. I think this feels slightly different to me, in the sense of it's not, we looked at some of the other building projects, they've been, either crumbling, they're waterlogged, they're, I, this doesn't, this feels slightly different to me, that's all. So, I'm just saying I'm struggling with it.
These are different. I mean, these are, these are your main streets, right? I mean, you have these spillover effects that are impacting, you know, your main drags in town.
No, and I think everybody knows I'm a proponent of our downtown, and, you know, bringing up our downtown, obviously. But I don't, I'm just, I guess I don't have a good, I almost wish we could just push this off for a little bit longer, is what I'm feeling.
May I just, before we go on, I would just like to say that the land bank has been talking about this one for a while, and the land bank was unanimous in moving this forward. Counselor Termath?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I definitely agree with my fellow colleagues' sentiments here, Counselor Hanselman. I just think that, you know, when it comes to property owners' rights, you know what I mean, and the code, sometimes there's this broad brush, you know, because the house is under construction, you know what I mean? And of course, there's going to be violations, because you got walls, you know, removed, and you got, you know, electrical and plumbing, and there's no finishes. But just kind of taking it all in from Mr. Palm Bryant's, and I do apologize for messing up your name. But, you know, just, just kind of taking all of it in from both sides, you know, I just don't feel that this is a dangerous, you know, building, you know? But I do understand the other side of the coin when it comes to having some sort of, you know, timeline, you know, to get something done. And because that is time and money, and everything is time and money. So, you know, I would just suggest that, you know, keep that in the focus. But, you know, this is, this is not a dangerous building, and so I just want to say that. Thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you all set?
Oh, God.
Well, I mean, have you had enough to say this evening?
No.
Well, but can you live with it if I don't allow you to speak again?
I can. I can live with it very quickly.
All right, you got a minute. Come on up. Because you know what, it's 9:15, and we're not done yet.
Oh, listen, I apologize.
That's okay. You do not have to apologize. These take the time they take. I'm okay with that.
So, the only thing I want to say is, going through all the inspections, my house is nowhere near a nuisance, nor is it a hazard. All I'm asking is, to avert more angst, I am saying, "Hey, within the next month, the siding will be done. The outside, minus some paint, okay, given the weather. Inside, no offense, that's winter work. I'm going to take all winter to do it, okay? I'm putting back a 100-year-old trim back into that house that I had to find, okay? So, and it's going to look gorgeous. It's going to bring the property values around me like you wouldn't believe, except for the church side, which I am going to take care of that myself, and I will take care of that in other ways, okay? But as you can see, a lot is done. I haven't done much, and there's not much debris, other than construction debris, debris, excuse me, and the old porch, which the young ladies of the Codes Department talked me into going to the original 1900s porch. I'm sorry, but I happen to like it, too, okay? So, please forgive me. But this is what I want. I'm following the original plan. The original plan states that, at the end, which I'm at, is the siding and the paint and the landscaping. That's where I'm at. The girls know it. The girls know it. No offense, please. So I thank you very much for continuing to listen to me. I'm going to go and sit down now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands. That is one, two, three, four in favor. All those opposed? Three opposed. And that is Councilor Hanselman, Councilor Turmath and Councilor Martell opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Twenty-two dash five zero nine dash zero one. This is a hearing to determine whether five fifty-four Main Street identified as tax map K eighteen lot seven and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at book seventeen eight, seventeen eighty-eight hundred twenty-nine, box ninety-four, page ninety-four, and mortgage record at book one nine zero one two, page six six two, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen MRSA sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine what if any remedy is appropriate. This is five fifty-four Main Street in Springvale, just to be clear. Ian?
So I'll, I'll present some pictures first for you. This is just a photo from across the street. You can see a for sale sign. And, and, and to clarify too, all the properties, all the pictures you're seeing tonight are from the twenty-seventh of October. I tried to take these photos, do a walk around of the building one week prior. Rained a lot last week, so I sought the, the one sunny day to do this. And just some photos, it's, it's actually looking a lot better than it was. It's getting ready for a sale. I've spoken with the seller and I've spoken with a broker representing the buyer. I believe both of them are attending by Zoom, possibly in the room for the, the buyer. I'm not entirely sure on that, but they expressed that they are going to attend as well. They understand the dangerous building hearing process. They understand that this is, that a rehabilitation plan would be in effect and part of that rehabilitation would be the sale of the property to a buyer. Some of the properties, pictures of the side. There is some graffiti on the back of the building. Just to, it's been there for a while. I'll run you through some of the notices of violation, shows to the care and attention that has been given to this property over the last couple of years. Some of the longstanding issues. This is a substantial amount of wetness on the exterior of the building. This is the way that this building looks at the front. You can see pictures of the interior. It's, it's empty. This is five fifty-four Main Street. So Evergreen Real Estate has owned this property since two thousand eighteen. It's appraised at two hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. It, it's, it's depreciated at forty-six percent. It's on Main Street, but he says it's next to the Sherwin-Williams building and then across from Bel Air, close to the rail trail. This is the deed. There is a mortgage on this property to an entity called TOT Associates, TNT Golf Land Incorporated. They have not been contacted by them. They have received notice. The mortgage is four hundred thousand dollars on the property. This is the hearing notice is filed to the two entities. These are the certified mailings and receipts of those. It was also advertised in the newspaper. And then these are the notices of violation. So actually, I'm going to just go in a little different order. The water's been off since April two thousand nineteen, so we're talking about three years now. The sewer's inactive. It has an inactive account with a twelve thousand three hundred and forty-dollar balance. The property taxes are current. It has had a vacant license for a period that has expired on October fifteenth. The occupancy permit has expired and there's no construction permits. Run you through the notices of violation. This one's from October thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. They didn't, had not obtained a vacant building license at that time. There was substantial overgrowth. I think there's some, and then on, on July twenty-second, two thousand twenty, there was, still had not obtained a vacant building license. There was a fair amount of trash found on the property. In that time period, there were inoperative motor vehicles on the property. The property was substantially overgrown and there was a camper being used as a dwelling. The owner had, had allowed this abandoned car to remain on the property without management and this is unsafe and unsanitary. I don't know how this was ultimately resolved. And on June second, two thousand twenty-one, they, it had, it had not, still not obtained a vacant building license. Excuse me. It had obtained a vacant building license, but it expired on March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Looking for some pictures in these notices of violation. And then on, on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, still substantial overgrowth. I think this was a lot of the concerns about its care and, and continued maintenance. There were openings on the gable end that were open. You can still see those in the pictures from today. The exterior surfaces showed signs of decay around the windows and exterior doors. And this is how it was looking in September of this past year. So substantial amount of overgrowth, property, overgrowth around the sides. I don't even think you could reach the front door as, as this picture was being taken. And difficult to, to find your way in there. Here's the, the openings. That's, that still remains. Vandalism was reported in the police report in two thousand eighteen. So it's possible that that graffiti has been there since that time. I don't know when that's there, but it is there currently. So the violations are indicative to a lack of care and continuous attention. It's a hazard to health and safety and a fire hazard. It's been vandalized. You know, the, the outcome of this is that the intention is to sell it, move it forward, hopefully find reoccupancy. And I don't want to dwell on this much longer, given the amount of time. I think the owner understands what the rehabilitation plan would entail, meaning that it would be sold on and then, and then brought into occupancy.
Is the owner here or the owner representative?
I think so. I, I think they're online.
Let me just wait and see if any councils have any questions of you first.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Anybody? Are we ready to hear? Councilor Martell?
Yes, thank you, Ian. You mentioned this was currently for sale. It looked like the only violations were a permit which had just expired and some vegetation that really doesn't look that bad. Is that going to hold up the sale or what is, what is kind of the final?
Oh, it's absolutely not going to hold up the sale.
Okay.
It'll actually facilitate the sale.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, who's on Zoom then for? Can't read it that.
Yes. This is Jin.
Yes, feel free to speak, sir.
I can't see any, is he, does he have video?
I don't know if he has video.
I don't have a video.
Okay, just tell us who you are, please.
This is Jin Wong.
Yes.
The owner of the property.
Okay.
About four years ago. And like he, like Ian said, right now this property is under agreement and expect to close next month. And I'm expecting, I'm expecting to pay the sewage bill, the twelve thousand and change at the closing.
Okay.
Is the, is the, is the buyer's representative also in attendance?
No, no.
Yes, they are. Would you all like to, do you have something that you'd like to say or ask or come on up?
Sure.
You've been waiting here all this meeting, you know, this is it. Come on.
We're looking forward to it.
Because we might have some questions of you, like what you're planning to do.
We brought stuff, so.
My name is Joe Pierce. This is my wife, Sue Pierce. We own Precision Roofing here in town and we currently have an office in Springvale. And we're looking to purchase this building and move our business in there.
Oh, great.
We're currently under contract. Closing is December sixth.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah.
And this will facilitate, I mean, we, we, we feel like when we do these things, this is what's moving this along. So.
Yeah.
That's why we do it, because we didn't want that building to stay empty any longer.
Right, correct. So we're planning on completely gutting the building. All new heating system, plumbing, right down to studs and starting over and revamping the whole thing.
Excellent.
Our finished date, we're thinking April, May.
What guys actually did my roof?
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Very quickly, all in one day, and let me tell you, that is, anybody that can do that, I'm like.
We try.
Yeah.
You do. So thank you. Ian, just, just clarify for everybody on the council why we need to continue with this process in light of.
So I, I think it's important for you to continue with this process to hold the current owner's feet to the fire, to make the transaction.
Right, exactly. So everybody understands why we are doing this. So excited. So you're going to move out of your rental space and own your own building?
Correct.
Love it. Really happy and it's in Springvale, so hey.
Yeah, it's a great location. We're looking forward to it.
Excellent. I am looking forward to it. That's, that's great. So unless you have something else you want to tell us, we pretty much got all the information we really wanted out of you, so. No, I mean in terms of what's going to be in there, so we're all excited because none of us knew.
Congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
Good property when it, when it's fixed up and cleaned up.
Do you have a, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Hanselman?
What type of roof are you going to put on it? I'm just curious. Are you going to do a fun, fun metal or?
Whatever is the best roof for that building, right?
Right, exactly.
Whatever he's going to do, he's going to fix that peak that's coming together in a weird way, causing the water dripping down the masonry, yes?
Yeah.
I saw that.
She needs some love.
Yes, it needs some love.
Yes, it does.
So we're, we're ambitious and ready to get in there as soon as possible, so.
Cool, excellent.
Yep.
Any other questions? Nope, I think you are able to go sit down and thank you for waiting so long for us to get to yours. Okay, Ian, anybody have any other questions or can I?
Well, I wanted just to explain the rehab plan again. So Jamie is, the code enforcement office has, has told me that they've gone through a site plan, the rehab plan, you know, it's intended to be rather simple, you know, so it's, it's, you know, we, we did, we do them very quickly. And then finally, you know, once the filing's done and, and they, they own the property and they complete it, we'll discharge at their request. The findings in order, so everything's free and clear and, 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 and finished. So that's, that's, that's the goal, right?
It is. That is our goal. All right, so I'm seeing, you have another one, Councilor Turmath?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do apologize. Ian, real quick, so with this process, we were able to go and, and get the back payment from the previous owners then for, you know, for everything that's been in the rears. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, he, it will all be paid, the sewer bill will be paid.
Right, right. But I mean, I, I was listening intently and there was a, a comment that I was just trying to get the clarification of because you said, let the process go through, of course, but, you know, we have to hold the previous owners responsible. You know, can you just clarify that a little bit, just from my understanding?
So the, so the, there's a twelve thousand dollar sewer fee and you just heard the prior owner say that they were going to pay for that at closing. So that, that's that real estate, real estate transaction. It doesn't involve us. When, when we do our due diligence on these dangerous buildings, we inquire of the tax collector of amounts owing to the city. It's indicative of people's maintenance. For example, with the nineteen Winter Street, they pay taxes late every year. And, or, or not at all. And, and then additionally, we reach out to the Water and Sewer District to find out what liens they have. It's a communication piece as well. And we also reach out to the Police Department to find out what calls have been made. And these are really the, the public services that a, that a property receives to, that, that we bring to light. In this case, the Sewer Department was sitting through site plan review and brought to my attention that this fee was owed and hadn't been paid. And then this is a means by which we can make sure that that, that fee gets paid in the closing, so that, that, that new future buyer isn't saddled with a prior owner's debt.
Ian, I appreciate that and thank you for, for that clarifying question. Thanks so much.
Okay, I think I can declare, I can close the hearing. Just want to make sure I get it right because we've been doing this a long time now. Okay. Twenty-two dash five one zero dash zero one. Based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to seventeen MRSA sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine regarding five fifty-four Main Street, what does the city council find are the facts and what does the city council judge? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property, has been owned by Evergreen Real Estate LLC since two thousand eighteen. The water has been off since April two thousand nineteen. Property has been vacant and unoccupied for an extended length of time. Property is inadequately maintained without continuous care and management constituting a hazard to health and safety. During the abandonment of this property, the owner has allowed abandoned cars and unoccupied campers to remain on the property without management. This is unsafe and unsanitary. B, the property was noticed for violations for abandonment on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, July twenty-second, two thousand twenty, June second, two thousand twenty-one and September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. The vacant building license for this property has expired indicating abandonment of the property. C, the most recent inspection on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two found violations of City Code, chapter ninety dash thirteen B five, two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference, overgrown vegetation, three oh two point four, trash and garbage on property, three oh eight point one, opening and gable open to elements, three oh four point one. Exterior surfaces show signs of decay, including masonry around windows and the exterior walls, three oh four point two. These violations are indicative of lack of care, continuous attention and inadequate, inadequate maintenance constituting a hazard to health and safety and a fire hazard. Property has been vandalized indicating abandonment and inadequate maintenance. D, there are twelve thousand three hundred and forty dollars in sewer fees owing as of October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Based on the foregoing findings, municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, lack of continuous care and abandonment. Property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. An abandoned and vacant buildings that sits for more than ninety days without constant maintenance has deteriorated, is a fire hazard, is inadequately maintained and is unsanitary enough to be uninhabitable. Uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupant's health and safety, a blight to the neighborhood and Main Street and unless abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated, will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve, Councilor Stackpole?
Move we approve.
Is there a second? Councilor Brink?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. That is a unanimous vote. Yes, very. Looking forward to when you start work on the building. Okay, we got another one, guys. One more.
Madam Mayor?
You don't have to stay any longer, you know. Um, at ten. Our meetings are, by rules of procedure, will go to ten. That was the change we made and then it will need a majority vote if we're to go further. Remembering that after a certain hour, nothing good happens. So twenty-two dash five twenty-one dash zero one. After hearing testimony, oh, wait a minute. Are we all done?
We have one 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 five Main Street.
How did I miss that? Oh, I must have skipped it. Hold on. Unless you left it out. Wait a minute, I know it's here. Ah, here it is, sorry. Okay, twenty-two dash five one one dash zero one. This is a. Okay, 22-511-01, this is a hearing to determine whether 115 Main Street, identified as Tax MAP K36, Lot 1, and further described in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book 16555, Page 898, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859, and to determine what if any remedy is appropriate. Declare the public hearing, or the hearing, sorry, not public hearing, the hearing open.
The hearing, yes, please, thank you. This property is owned by Sanford Plaza LLC, they're based in Bedeford, they've owned it since 2013, the water's been off since December 2020. There happens to be an account credit, but the Water District hasn't been able to identify a mailing address to send them a return. Stick with the utility report here, current as of October 21st, zero balance on the sewer, the property taxes are two years in arrears. The electrical meter is present on the eight frame, but absent on the garage, I'll show you the photos in a minute. They have never seen, never obtained a license, but, sorry, I would amend this to say that they obtained a license yesterday and paid a fee of $3,000. The occupancy permit has expired, and there are no construction permits active. I'll run you through the photos here, there is, as of October 27th, there was a sign that said in graffiti Rocket Vape, with vape signs on the side. I don't know whether a vape store had ever been opened here, just keep in mind that this is within a block of the most expensive high school ever built in the state of Maine, and a major walking route for all of your students. There's an abandoned pylon sign, there's this abandoned awning, excuse me, canopy from the garage. Parking lot lights are askew, they lean. There's graffiti visible on the backside of these buildings. Here's another picture of the vape stores. The interior looks to be abandoned, there's personal property and furnishings are absent, looks to be junk, debris, trash, possibly hazardous, it's fire hazard and unsanitary. There's a lot of overgrowth, you can see some of the growth growing out of the building, there are shingles falling off the side of the building. Another picture of overgrowth. The canopy is rusted, rusted enough to be structurally unsound, you can see daylight through the roof. There are old fuel openings, these, in the canopy, again, here's another photo of the rust in these columns. I would note that there's a monitoring well present on this property. When you see a monitoring well present in an old gasoline station, that means the site is open from the Department of Environmental Protection standpoint. I understand from a review of the planning files that fuel oil tanks were removed, I saw a reference to chemicals that had seeped into the soil. I did contact DEP to look into whether or not this monitoring well needed to be maintained, or whether it could be closed. They haven't gotten back to me yet, it's also my understanding that the owner has now also reached out to the DEP to find out whether or not they can close this well. The way that a well is closed is done with the EPA, and it's filled with bentonite clay to make it safe. And if I didn't mention, this was a former Getty facility. This is the garage building in the back, I mentioned the missing meters on it, the windows are boarded, there's broken glass in a couple places, here's the second place where glass is missing, a piece of plywood has been leaned against the interior. Here's another picture of a close-up of the broken glass, siding is coming off, piece of the fascia is coming off, other pictures of boarded windows, the graffiti on the sides of the buildings. This is an old oil disposal secondary tank. And then here's a picture of the property from the road, as passerby's might see it. As I said, it was owned by, it's owned by Sanford Plaza LLC, it's on Main Street next to Brary Avenue, couple blocks from the high school. This is the deed from Limits Petroleum to Sanford Plaza. Sanford Plaza has been administratively dissolved. So, I understand this, the last filing date was in 2013. The notice of hearing was to a registered agent, going to confirm that, Mark Patel at, in Bedeford, at this address informing of the hearing, this is the certified mailing that went there, this is the receipt, this is the notice, three successive weeks. Notice of violation from June 7th, 2021. Excessive weeds, has not obtained a vacant building license, July 23rd, 21. Again, overgrowth and failure to obtain a vacant building license, June 3rd, 2022. Again, overgrowth and failure to obtain a vacant building license, September 26th, 2022. Rubbish and trash, abandoned sign, the exterior has not been maintained, holes in the canopy roof, shingles falling off, damaged siding, broken windows, cracked glass, and overgrowth. Vacant building had still not been obtained. Following the notice of violation, and I'm trying to get to the... Some pictures were provided showing that the grass had been cut. Can't tell what else had been done from that. There was an email from an email address, info@eccre.com, first name Shai, last name R, discussing, talking about a plant permit that was submitted. Aaron responded, the first time we'd able to talk to this, we discussed, or I shared an email with him that, of the hearing coming up. And then I asked him, making sure, regarding the underground storage tanks, and clarifying that, so we've been working through those issues. And then, another lengthy email referencing Ziad, I think it was a Mr. Ziad. And additional emails. There's additional emails, and then did make a payment of $3,000 on the 31st, and then a lengthy email this evening, actually, yesterday evening at 7:30, and then follow-up with another email after making payment. Provided photos showing that the sign had been painted over, that the vape signs had been removed. Looks like the columns have been painted black. Not much in the police report, as far as what this is picking up is motor vehicle stops along the road. Aaron, is there anything else I should add?
Ian, can I just ask you a question about the motor vehicle stops, that's just because that's a place where the police sit?
Yeah, I mean, it's done in the case of the police records, that it's proximate to an address, it's not a property address file.
Did you want me to comment, Ian, still?
Yes, if you have anything else to add, Aaron.
No, you covered most of it, Shai has been communicating with us, trying to resolve the items on the violation, and he did, as that receipt showed, finally obtain and paid for past due vacant building license. We really need to see some more action with the corrosion on the canopy to see what the actual issue is there, from a structural engineer's report, and to be able to see continued maintenance there. I believe that one of those emails does state his hopes in selling the building in the future, but, again, we want to make sure that that canopy is safe and that DEP follows up, or EPA follows up with that well, too.
Yes, thank you, Aaron. So, I think what we're seeing is some good progress, now that we've made contact through the dangerous building hearing, and the notice of hearing regarding that. I think there's still some questions remaining, and some issues related to abatement of the deficiencies. It sounds like he wants to put a rehab plan in place to potentially sell the property. I think there's still some questions about the gas station canopy, it's obsolete, it may be structurally unsound, so to prove that in some particular way of whether it needs to be removed, or can stay in some form. Thank you, Aaron.
I'm sorry, Fred, I know that your hand is up, but this is for parties of interest, this is a hearing. How could, do you own it? Are you in a butter? Then you're not a party of interest. Oh, well... Okay, can you just wait a second, I'll let, let me just wait a second, Fred. Aaron, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Shai, in a phone call with me today, did state that Fred Smith was going to be leading up maintenance on that building, representing him since he couldn't be here.
Okie doke, that's fine. Do we have Mr., the person that's referenced as Shai, does he have a full name? Shai? Oh, okay. Okay, Fred, you can, unless anybody has any questions of Ian, then we'll hear from the owner's representative, Fred Smith.
Okay, I was contacted Thursday by the owner, asking me to go over and evaluate the situation and clean the place up. All the graffiti has been removed, all the rubbish has been removed, all the lawns have been mowed, all of the windows that were broken were boarded up, all the curbing has been scraped, free of weeds and everything. The canopy, the rust you see on the canopy is only on the downspouts for the gutters. The I-beams and all that is solid and still in good working condition. There's no chance of it falling down, but if you want to have a structural engineer go look at it, I talked to quite a few people that's had the canopy's and that little square catch basin that hooks to the gutters, seen the rust out quite frequently. I'm hoping he sells it, but he just asked me to come here tonight, because he is really, really sick. When I talked to him today. So, everything that Aaron said he wanted done, as far as I know, is done. There's no more weeds, vegetation, some of the pallets you saw do not belong to him, it belonged to an adjacent building, property, that just leaned them there, they came and took them away. But I think the property looks really good right now, I think he's going to have me maintain it until it does sell. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Fred. Anybody, wait a minute, second, Fred, Fred, in case anybody has a question. Councilor Brink?
I noticed that all this stuff got done since this process was put in place, so I'm really concerned about removing the process and not following through to make sure, because I imagine he would still have Fred take care of the property until he could sell it, and this, I... I bet this process would make that happen faster.
I have no problem with going on with the process. My biggest thing is, he called me Thursday night, Friday, we were there.
You were, and it looked great, you did, guys did a great job, I saw your whole crew out there.
Yeah.
It was fantastic, I thought, yes!
You know...
It does look good.
I know that the property is not the most desirable property, my biggest concern is that once that property is taken down, or something, it's probably a non-compliment lot, and nothing will ever go there again, and then nobody will maintain it, you know, so, you know, you work with the things you know, or you work with the things you don't. And me, I, I get a call, I go. And until he tells me I can't go no more, I'll maintain it.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, Fred, Councilor Turmatt, you have a question for Fred?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Smith, thanks for coming tonight. You know, it's, I don't know if you even have the answer for this question, but I'm just going to propose it anyways. You know, why does it take this long, you know, this many years for this property not to have movement on it, like Councilor Brink so eloquently put, for then all of a sudden, because now we have a process, and now all of a sudden, you know, the owner's going to be like, hey, I'm about to lose my investment here, but that, there's no value, you know, in regards to what it's contributing to the community. So, I don't know if you have an answer for that.
Well, I would say some of the issues that I deal with on the type of properties are, you get a lot of people that are of foreign countries that buy it. He's a foreigner that bought it, doesn't know all of our customs, maybe where he comes from, this is a norm, I don't, can't say it is or can't say it isn't. So, when I talk to him, you know, on Thursday night, voice messaged him today and stuff, and, you know, I'm saying, you know, things are different, you know, you have to maintain your property, you have to do this. Again, the language problem is a problem, but they get low-interest rate loans, they don't always know what they're getting into, you know, and so they, I try to work with everybody, you know, and sometimes they just don't have a clue, you know, and I'm sorry, because it's the custom they came from, it's not, I'm not downing them, I'm saying, it's just the way they grew up, how things were there. And they come here, and they think it's the same, and I take time, and I spend time with them, and explain to them, and, you know, I don't know why I get called, I had no idea, well, I just got a call.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Fred. Any other questions of Ian or anyone else? Anything to add, Ian?
Just, I think we've got some pictures that are in the evidence. I think, you know, without evidence, I think the facts are the facts. And I think that what you heard is that he's open to a rehabilitation plan, sounds like we should move forward with that. He has a desire to sell the property.
Thank you, then I will close the hearing. Okay, 22-512-01, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 regarding 1115 Main Street, what does the City Council find are the facts, and what does the City Council adjudge? adjudicate? Based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, the property, has been owned by Sanford Plaza LLC since two thousand thirteen. The water has been off since December twenty-twenty. Property has been vacant and unoccupied for an extended length of time. The property is inadequately maintained without continuous care and management constituting a hazard to health and safety. The property is dilapidated, vegetation is overgrown, parking lot lights lean askew. Gas can, canopy is severely rusted and structurally unsafe and functionally obsolete. The property is a public nuisance. B, the property appears abandoned as defined in thirty-A MRSA Section thirty-one dash three-one-zero-six-B and City Code one-four-nine-six-point-three as evidenced by long-term vacancy. Doors and windows are broken, boarded and open. Personal property and furnishings are absent from the property, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. Property has deteriorated, including structural members, siding, roofing membrane, and plants are overgrown and grow through the building. Vandals have defaced the walls of the building, an abandoned sign pylon stands next to the road visible to passerby's. Property was noticed for violations for abandonment on June seventh, twenty-twenty-one, July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, June third, twenty-twenty-two, and September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. Property owner finally obtained a vacant building license on October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. D, the most recent inspection on September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two found violations of City Code ninety dash thirteen-B five, two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference, trash garbage found on the property, three-oh-eight-point-one, exterior not maintained, shingles falling off, damaged siding, broken windows, three-oh-four-point-one, broken windows, three-oh-four-point-one, three-point-one, overgrown vegetation. E, property taxes are delinquent and overdue as of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, indicating inadequate maintenance and abandonment. F, the property may not be occupied without an occupancy permit. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudicate that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building constitutes a hazard to health or safety because of inadequate maintenance, lack of continuous care, dilapidation and abandonment. The property is a fire hazard. The gas station canopy is obsolete and rusted enough to be structurally unstable. The property is unsuitable to the abandoned occupancy in which it is put. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated. An abandoned and vacant building that sits for more than ninety days without constant maintenance has deteriorated, is a fire hazard, is inadequately maintained, and is unsanitary enough to be uninhabitable. Uninhabitable buildings are a hazard to any future occupants' health and safety, a blight to the neighborhood and Main Street, and a less abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated will continue to be a public nuisance and detract from the welfare of Sanford. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Stackpole?
Move we approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Brink?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor, by a show of hands, that is a unanimous vote. Okay. Orders. Okay, we have five minutes, and I think we can get through this, and then it will be quiet. We are going to finish the orders, and then if there is necessity to continue, we'll have to take a vote. Twenty-two dash five-two-one dash zero one, eleven Kimball Street. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented and then making findings of fact, and if then a judging, eleven Kimball Street to be a dangerous building or a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, the City Council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken. I'm going to ask for a table motion, and there is no discussion for a table motion. Do I have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Deputy Mayor Hurlhey, Counselor Brink?
Second.
We have...
May I just clarify something?
Oh.
I just want to clarify that, that you said, "and if then a judging." So I just want to be clear that your, your statement there was in, that it said, "and if then a judging."
Right.
So just, thank you.
I did it right, right?
I, I, I think so.
I think so.
I just wanted to make...
I was pretty sure I read it first, so...
Thank you. I might have missed it.
I, didn't I say that?
I just wanted to make it very clear for anybody who might be reviewing this recording afterwards.
And, and it is tentatively scheduled for the December twentieth meeting, for everyone's information. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. So I'm going to do the next three together. Twenty-two dash five-one-three dash zero one, nineteen Winter Street. Twenty-two dash five-one-four dash zero one, five-five-four Main Street. Twenty-two dash five-one-five dash zero one, one-one-five Main Street. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented and then making findings of fact, and if then a judging, nineteen Winter Street, five-five-four Main Street, and one-one-five Main Street to be a dangerous building or a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, the City Council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented and then making findings of fact, and a judging, nineteen Winter Street, five-five-four Main Street, and one-one-five Main Street to be dangerous building or a nuisance pursuant to seventeen MRSA Sections twenty-eight fifty-one to twenty-eight fifty-nine, the City Council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken. It is ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the property is to be immediately secured within twenty-four hours. And be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the nuisance is to be immediately abated by removing and disposing of any of all, any, any and all rubbish, debris, vehicles, equipment, household, human, hazardous waste, and dangerous materials from the property. And be it further ordered if the owner or party in interest demonstrates the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property by submitting and having a rehabilitation plan approved by the city manager within thirty days of recording this order, and carrying out such rehabilitation plan in a timely manner, the order to immediately abate the nuisance may be delayed. Such rehabilitation plan must include, at a minimum, all deficiencies listed as part of the findings of fact as herein set forth are corrected, property is rehabilitated and brought into compliance with all applicable state and local codes, and meets all permitting and inspection requirements, and there shall be no occupancy or use of the building until the property has been satisfactorily rehabilitated. Be it further ordered that the city clerk record this order in the York County Registry of Deeds and cause attested copies of this order to be served upon the persons as required by law. And be it further ordered that if this order is not complied with, the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to ask for bids for the abatement of the said nuisance. And be it further ordered that if this order is not timely complied with and no timely appeal is taken, the city manager may undertake the ordered corrective action at municipal expense and recover all expenses, including reasonable attorney's fees by means of a special tax or civil action. This decision may be appealed to Superior Court pursuant to main rule of civil procedure, ADB. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we vote for each property separately as nineteen Winter Street had a, had a split vote.
Oh, I forgot.
So I, I don't think you need to re-read it.
And I will separate the question, and the first order up would be twenty-two dash five-one-three dash zero one, nineteen Winter Street.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we... To approve nineteen Winter Street.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor, I mean, excuse me.
Second.
Counselor Brink, you see what happens when it gets late? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? There are four in favor. All those opposed? There are three opposed, and the same three that were in the other one, okay? So now we can do the, the other two in conjunction?
Yes.
So do I have a motion to approve? Let me just put that twenty-two dash five-one-four dash zero one, which is five-five-four Main Street, and twenty-two dash five-one-five dash zero one, one-one-one-five Main Street. Deputy Mayor Hurlhey?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve both properties.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Brink? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? That is a unanimous vote. All right, people. All right, it's past ten o'clock. I would need a motion to continue past ten, otherwise I will have a, I would love to have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion that we extend just for Counselor comments and future genitals.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Motion by Counselor Termath, second by Counselor Martell. Anybody in favor? All those in favor? There are two. All those opposed? Motion fails. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Counselor Stackpole made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Brink is the second. All those in favor of adjournment? There are four in, five, one, two, three, four, five in favor. Those opposed? Two opposed, and that is Counselor Martell and Counselor Termath. Thank you, everybody. That was a lot of good work we did this evening, so, and I appreciate that it was a long meeting. Good night. I will declare, we are adjourned.